All right. Is Councilmember Molton on line?
Uh, she is there. She's not. Why? Her camera's not on.
Take role, Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Molton?
She's there.
She's there.
I see she's on the camera. She's just, we can't hear.
Councilmember Molton?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
And Councilmember Bregel is absent.
Please join me for the Pledge of Legions.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a report out from closed session?
Not today, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, we are gonna move on to Mayor's announcements and I don't have a whole lot. I've been sucked into a lot of stuff at my job. So, but I will say that I had a dozen AFS students come and visit City Hall the other day. They're from Turkey and the Philippines and Indonesia. AFS stands for America Field Service. It's an exchange program. So, they were in town and they were learning about the way different things ran. And so, they came and talked to us at the City of Eureka. And it was fun. They got to watch a Transportation Safety Commission meeting for a few minutes and ask some questions. And it was delightful visiting with them. So, we will move on to presentations. And our first presentation is going to be the Youth Council Report. And our Youth Council Coordinator, Sierra Spear Dillon, will you introduce them, please? Ready? Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Thank you so much for having us all tonight. The Eureka Youth Council is excited to present to you some of the projects they've recently been working on and share what's in store. My name is Sierra Spear Dillon. I'm the Youth Council Coordinator. And I have with me our Supervisor, Robin Prasker, and Assistant Jim Thomas, and five members of our Youth Council. One is attending via Zoom and one member was unable to make it tonight, but she is a great member of the team. So, let's get started. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Asher Russo. Asher, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm Asher Russo from Eureka High School. Thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to be here. We're first going to start with the recap about what the Youth Council is for those who may not know. Eureka Youth Council is a unique program designed to give Eureka teens the opportunity to learn about the local city government while working on projects that can have a positive impact on the community. The 2022 Eureka Youth Council is made up of six members joining us from Eureka High School, Zobarnum High School, and St. Bernard's Academy. Pictured from left to right are myself, Asher Russo, Solve Lasand, Kate Fazio, Alexandra Nilson, Rory Bickmore, and Rafael Hernandez. Our motto is "Learning today to lead tomorrow, Eureka's future leaders." We've been enjoying the year so far together. We have bonded as a team very well. We look forward to sharing our projects with the community. Now I'll pass it over to Alexandra, who is joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Alexandra Nilson. I attend St. Bernard's Academy. And I'm going to be talking about our first project of the year. So, way back in the fall, we decided to start off our projects with a public service announcement. After some consideration, we decide, we learned that thirty percent of all of Eureka's recycling is actually trash. This actually touched our hearts and we decided this would be a great topic for our first project. So, we started off by doing some research about recycled contamination. We learned how recycling gets contaminated, common mistakes that were made. And we decided to make a public service announcement off of this. So, we wrote the script, developed the characters. We studied some effective PSAs. We acted in the PSA ourselves. And we did all the voiceovers and we had some lovely city staff to produce it for us. And it's going to be airing this Wednesday, but we do have a special showing of it tonight. So, I think we are going to go ahead and watch our eighties horror-style public service announcement, Night of the Living Garbage. So, you wanna take it away? Horror movies. It's a feeling monsters aren't real. I'm gonna recycle this stuff.
Don't you know contamination spreads. Look at the monster you've created.
Are you okay? No, I just dreamed I was attacked by this garbage or this recycling monster for throwing the wrong stuff in the recycling.
Hey, girls. You know that this pizza box can't go into the recycling bin. It causes contamination. It's the same reason why you have to rinse out all of your containers before you put it into the recycling bin.
Oh, I had no idea. Thanks, Dad.
Horror movies can be scary, but recycling doesn't have to be. Visit HumboldtRecycles.com to make sure your contaminated recycling doesn't come back to haunt you.
Yay.
All right, so I know that we weren't able to hear the audio here on Zoom, but if you wanna watch it again, if you wanna share it to any of our social medias or anything like that, you can visit EcoEureka or it is on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube pages, EcoEureka.com, or HumboldtRecycles.com. We are very proud of this project and we are excited to share it with the community and educate them on a very serious issue. So, once again, if you'd like to watch it again, you can go to any of those sites below. And that is all from me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And sorry you guys couldn't hear it on Zoom. I don't know what the, what it was. Yeah, it was pretty fun. So, look it up. Kate?
Hi, my name is Kate Fazio and I'm here to talk about our second project that we did. A youth survey entitled "Eureka Teens: Your Voice, Your Future." As a group, we've had a lot of ideas for what we wanted our next project to be. However, we thought it would be best to open up the conversation to everyone our age in Eureka and get good baseline data to help us in the right direction. The purpose of our survey was to collect current information on youth's thoughts on the mental health, well-being, economic, environmental, and social concerns, and what resources and opportunities youth believed are available and most used to meet basic extracurricular and recreational needs of the generation. This information helps us to understand how youth currently live, learn, work, and play in our community, and what can be improved or implemented to provide higher quality of life in the city. As a group, we've developed the thirty-four-question survey. We designed the flyer and posted around town at local high schools. And then there was the radio PSA and the social media promotion to help get the word out. And for the survey results, I'll hand it over to Rafael. Thank you.
Uh, hello. My name is Rafael Hernandez. Thanks, Kate. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rafael Hernandez from Zobarnum. I'll be sharing some of our survey results. Uh, we had sixty-one responses with a variety of backgrounds. Here are just a few of the unique findings. Fifty-four percent said the lack of mental health resources is a social challenge that should be addressed and improved most urgently. While seventy percent said affordable housing is an economic challenge that should be addressed and improved most urgently. Fifty-four percent said there are not enough local free events for youth. And sixty-four percent said they do not have jobs and find it challenging to find a job. Some, based on some of our, so based on some of the results, what we've experienced ourselves and seen our friends experience, we wanted to focus on the opportunity for local teens to get jobs that leads us to your next project, which Silve is going to tell you about. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Solve Lasand. I'm from Eureka High. We all know that there are local employment problems, but did you know that those employment struggles are affecting local teens too? Well, that leads us to our next project, Get Hired. We've learned that local teens can't find jobs and are being turned away due to age and lack of experience. Meanwhile, many local businesses are hiring but cannot find dependable staff. So, we want to help. This next project is meant to connect local businesses with local youth who seek employment and to get them hired. It's a win-win. We are currently in the preliminary stage and we are exploring the pathway to payday model. We are seeking input, so be sure to stay tuned in the next few months for more to come. Until then, if you'd like to know more about Youth Council, just head on over to EurekaYouthCouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in line to speak?
That's all. Great job, Youth Council. Keep up the hard work. You're doing an amazing job. Uh, now we're gonna turn it back over to Council. If you guys have any questions for our youth.
Absolutely. Questions or comments? Councilmember Arroyo?
I was curious if the, um, as I was watching the video PSA, I wasn't sure if it would convert to radio very easily. But is there a radio version as well?
We haven't got that far yet, but I definitely think we could turn it into a radio PSA. And then we were going to do some other social media marketing campaigns kind of surrounding our garbage recycling monster that the contaminated recyclables created. So, I think there's more to come with the video as well.
Awesome. It was really great.
It was a ton of fun. It was like a government lesson and a whole video production lesson. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff thrown in there. I have a feeling that Sierra was responsible for that because you have all that experience with the camera.
Yeah, me and Joseph helped out, but they came up with the original idea and the script and everything they wanted to do. They just have tons of ideas, which is great to work with.
Nice. Anything else, Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you first for all of your contributions. I was just curious. I do quite a bit of thinking and meeting with folks around housing. So, I was curious to understand a little bit more when, you know, seventy percent of the youth surveyed said there were, there had been challenges with housing or they perceived that as one of the biggest challenges. Is that because they've been in situations where their housing was compromised or they're perceiving that from their friends? Or could you just say a little bit more about how that result was understood through the survey?
So, yes, so in the survey, uh, so the question would have been, uh, "Name your top three economic challenges that you think should be addressed and improved most urgently." So, then out of a list of probably fifteen different selections, they would choose. And out of all of those, it was surprising that so many young people were thinking of affordable housing when, you know, as a young person, you shouldn't have to worry about that sort of thing. So, that's why it was kind of surprising to us. Out of everything, seventy percent were saying that that was one of their top three.
And just to follow up, um, I'm wondering if it would be possible to do any follow-up with the youth who participated in the survey around that topic, just because it is, you know, such a pressing topic. And I was surprised too that so many youth had that as an issue. I mean, I understand, you know? I mean, it makes perfect sense, but I know it just seems like there's an opportunity there to potentially like drill down into that more or understand how we as a council then could use that information to either engage more with local youth in that conversation and in, you know, voices around housing or how we can speak to their needs, you know, to your needs more.
I think it could be something separately that we could look into. However, the survey was anonymous because we wanted the youth to be able to answer it truthfully. So, we did make it anonymous. So, as to going back to who already took it to follow up, that way, we can't really do it. But that could be something else additionally that we could look into.
All right. Councilmember Bauer?
No, I just wanted, that was a great PSA. I just wanna thank you all for being engaged in government. It's such a hard thing to get youth to do. So, I really appreciate you being here and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I'll echo that as well. And I'll also note that I would love to see survey results if there's something that could be shared. I see the Youth Council as a great voice for youth and the fact that you've so thoughtfully put together a survey and then asked your peers to weigh in, I just think it'd be a really valuable resource to share with the rest of the council if you're willing. So.
Yes, we can most definitely do that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other thoughts before we let them go? Well, I will reiterate what everybody said. Thank you. You guys did a great job. Congratulations on it. Kate, I'm trying to remember, is this two-year term? They're gonna do it again or?
One year.
It is one year.
Yes, so halfway through.
Excellent. Well, I hope you get to enjoy your summer too. And then we'll look forward to seeing you in the fall. All right.
Okay, good job, guys.
Thank you.
We're gonna shoot a quick photo, if that's all right.
Of course. Thank you. And next I'd like to invite up Community Services Coordinator, Steve Ennis. Ennis, is that what it is?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having our Community Services Department tonight. And I just wanted to invite you to our eighth annual Get Out and Play Day, which will take place a Saturday, July thirtieth. And so, we will be offering fun and family-oriented events throughout the greater Eureka on the thirtieth. And we will have events taking place from ten AM through four PM. And so, you definitely want to check out the schedule that we have. That will have all the specific times for all the locations because we will be having a lot of stuff going on throughout the day. And some of the events, some of the locations where we will be having events will be the Clark Museum, where we'll have free admission. The Eureka Municipal Golf Course, where we have a free bucket of balls for the driving range, along with a long drive and putting contest. And then the Discovery Museum will also be offering free admission. And at Cooper Gulch, we'll have a skateboard competition for all ages. And then also at the Sequoia Park Zoo, we will have kids twelve and under get in free with a paying adult. And at Sequoia Park, which will kind of serve as our hub for the event, we will have free zumba and yoga in the morning, followed up by a family Olympics, and then a water slide provided by the Humboldt Bay Fire Department. And then for the water enthusiasts out there, we will have events taking place at both Cal Poly Humboldt Aquatic Center. And then also Pacific Outfitters will be at the Bonnie Gould Dock by the Adorni Center too, doing demonstrations with kayaks and canoes and paddle boards also. So, I did bring by some posters for you and some schedules also. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys can all make it out or spread the word about it this year. And I can answer any questions that you do have about Get Out and Play Day.
It's gonna be great that everybody can finally get out and play after a few years. Does anybody have any questions? I had a question about, um, do you by any chance talk to Hoppy, the Humboldt Asian Pacific Islander group that's doing Chinatown?
No, but they have been at the Clark Plaza before.
Yeah, I remember there was a conversation about Get Out and Play Day when we first started talking. And so, um.
Yes, I do believe they, they might be there this year, I believe. Yeah.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Could you say what a home run derby is?
Yeah, so at Hartman Field, we're doing a, so all of our events are free. And so, we are offering a home run derby there where we're gonna have, it's open to anyone who's eighteen and over. And so, we're gonna use basically our backup softball set we have from our softball program. And then we're gonna go through three different rounds of, basically, they get ten pitches, or excuse me, twenty pitches or ten hits. And then we just, after each round, we will add up how many home runs that they have. And then after the first round, we'll take the top fifty percent. Then they'll move on to the second round. And then we'll take the top two after that. And it's kind of interesting because we had the home run derby contest for Major League Baseball last night.
Does the winner get a cool prize?
Yeah, the first and second place winners get trophies.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had not heard of that style of derby. I'm not a, I guess I'm not a baseball watcher. I didn't know that was a thing, but that sounds fun. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to it. Next up, we have public comments. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Come on up.
Good evening, Council Mayor, you guys, and ladies and gentlemen. So, I've been coming here for four years to talk about needle litter and having, trying to find a way to remedy that. We have a syringe exchange ran by drug addicts that caters to other drug addicts that were caught selling drugs over two years ago to this community and nothing was ever done to them. So, I'm pretty sure they're emboldened enough to continue their behavior of selling drugs to our community. I just took about a twenty-minute drive through Old Town, check out the scenery. Same story, people nodding off in groups of five or six, people sleeping on the sidewalk, trash all around them. I mean, what's being done to clean up this city and make it safer? I don't know what the stairs are about. This is important stuff. I mean, the mayor is in charge of the city and public nuisances. Needle litter is a public nuisance. Needle litter laying all over the place behind businesses is a public nuisance. People sleeping in the doorways of businesses is a public nuisance. Not being able to walk the waterfront trail without being assaulted. I mean, it's all bad, all the way around. And I've been coming here for four years, trying to get some accountability from you guys, and nothing ever happens. Not only don't you say anything bad about Hatchard, you don't do nothing to prevent them from doing what they're doing. It's like you want needles all over our county. You want drug addicts walking around that own this town, breaking out windows, going through people's yards at night. It's unacceptable. Something has to be done about it. Four years coming here. We've been on the news. I mean, you guys just sit there and stare at us like it's not, and you complain about e-cigarettes on the ground? Come on. Get a clue and clean up your city.
Good, I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Claudette. As I told you before, I talk on this paper so that I can stay on track while I read. And Jesus told them this parable. The ground of a certain rich man produced a good crop. He thought to himself, "What shall I do? I have no place to store my crops." Then he said, "This is what I will do. I will tear down my barns and build bigger ones. And there I will store my grains and my goods. And I'll say to myself, 'You have plenty of grain laid up for many years. Take life easy, eat, drink, and be merry.'" But God said to him, "You fool, this very night your life will be demanded from you. Then who will get what you have stored up for yourself?" This is how it will be with those who store things for themselves but are not rich towards God. In this parable, Jesus is showing us life is not about attaining great wealth so that we can have more money to do what makes us happy. It's not even about beautifying our community to draw more people to come visit or desire to live here. That vision is too small, just like the fool in the parable. He placed his trust in earthly goods, gaining happiness from that which neither had security or lasting value. No, this parable is about being responsible for true riches. You have chosen to represent Eureka. You are responsible with how do you utilize the resources and influence you have been entrusted with. Your duty is to help the heart of the people in this community to prosper. In this, not only the people, but you all will find true riches. How does one prosper? His word tells us the how. Obey the Lord your God. Follow him by obeying his demands, his commands, his laws, and his rules that are written in his teachings, the Bible. His promise is, "If you do these things, you will prosper in all you do and wherever you go." Jesus said, "Command those who are rich in this present world not to be arrogant, nor to put their hope in wealth, which is so uncertain, but to put their hope in God, who richly provides us with everything for our enjoyment." Britt Mooney, a missionary in Korea, put it this way. "Centuries ago, there was this discipline called alchemy, the precursor to modern-day chemistry. Alchemists believed that they could take common materials like lead and make them precious like metals of gold. They never did it, but that was the idea. The true kingdom of God can actually cause this transformation. With Jesus, we can take common and temporary things that will be destroyed one day and convert them to the immortal, eternal reward, precious treasures we can never lose. My desire is that we would all seek the kingdom of God, and all these things we are after will be provided. Amen."
Dear magistrate, dear comrades, I want to thank the city of Eureka and its leadership for the last six years for having created such an inclusive community. The level of inclusiveness in trying to please and appease minorities like myself, in that case, a German Jewish immigrant, is exceptional. And to use a term that was coined right here in Orange Cap City by a young junkie calling into the Board of Supervisor meeting, "You're crushing it." I've never felt so at home in this place that bears Alexander von Humboldt's name, with whom I share the same birthplace, Berlin. I would have never imagined that Humboldt County, and first and foremost, its county seat Eureka, would be so reminiscent of pre-1989 Germany, East Germany, that is. Land of the murals and empty storefronts, gray hopeless faces, and omnipresent, all-seeing, all-controlling government. All the government grants and programs, just like in my youth. All the empty shops and boarded-up buildings, all as tryst and melancholic as East Berlin in nineteen eighty-seven, I remember it well. The dependency on handouts and free stuff, exceptional, just like back then in East German, real-existing socialism. The roads and their condition, amazing. East German roads have nothing on them, and they had seen many Russian tanks rolling over them, again, crushing it. Lawlessness, mayhem, local corruption, another A-plus for that, guys. More like nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, but still, thank you. Takes me right back to my youth when Russian and Vietnamese mafias ruled the streets of Berlin. Exchanged that for lunatics and junkies and bang, you nailed it. Also, the media, oh, the media, singing the praise of you guys. The Pravda has nothing on the lost coast outhouse and your little gribbels is regurgitating your agenda-driven policies. Oh, the forced inoculations. Oh, the forced inoculations, don't get me started. All the city employees that were forced into your great large-scale medical experiment. At least Joseph Mengele was a doctor, right? You guys crushed it on that one for sure. The surveillance poles, beautiful, indiscriminately, total surveillance, stasi on steroids. Then, the reality-removed, hubris, incompetent, corrupt, unapologetic, and hubris, yeah, hubris local leadership, AKA you guys. A Gauliter or a Blockwart can learn a thing or two from you. The unwillingness to listen to your subjects, just like back then. And just like back then, ideology has replaced common sense and decency. Last but sure not least, oh, the needles, how we love the needles, and the lobotomized, docile hordes that they draw. Ah, just like we were perched behind the wall, dependent, misled, and controlled. I love it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, comrades.
No clapping, please.
We're all clapping for your favored people. I probably remember me. I'm really not here to talk to any of you people. It's really the Humboldt, good people of Humboldt County I'm here to address. I'm gonna start with this video.
All elected representatives work for we, the people. They are accountable to us and are required to follow law and proper form. When law and proper form are not followed, it is maladministration and a crime, which can and should be punished. The people themselves have a duty to hold our representatives accountable for their actions. It is up to us to make sure justice prevails. The people have a right to alter, reform, or abolish government as needed to bring it back to a position of strength. The people have a right to alter, reform, or abolish government as needed to bring it back to a position of strength and prosperity.
Okay, so I was here before, and I'd served you all a notice, and this is a signed lawful affidavit. It will go into court of record. Would you like to take this for me, please? What I wanna say is, you know, you guys haven't been listening to anything that, that people have been coming to you with for two and a half years. The media doesn't share our stories. And we're stand-up Humboldt. We're, we are the people that have people sharing their heartbreaking stories with us, like Steve's wife who was forced to take that jab. The kids are abused, they're coerced. You have all kinds of problems in hospitals, in the senior centers, and what? And what? You're, you got the kids up here in masks, so they, so now they're doing some more bidding for you? I suggest they learn to not work with a coercive, abusive government such as yourselves. You won't be here for long because the people are engaged, and you are not, you do not have power over us. We have power over you, and we're coming for you. We're tired of this, and we know exactly what our rights are now, even though we've been censored, even though the media here has done a wonderful job of just putting out everything that you guys want and censoring us. It's, it doesn't matter because what people need to know is, go to Truth Tornado. That was the video I played for you, and she will play you all kinds of short videos for your rights. And the last thing I'm gonna say is, out of Santa Rosa, Michelle Ford, the state national assembly leader, has a case, Crimes Against Humanity, for which that affidavit is partly related to, 220125009. Any vaccine injuries, Humboldt County, please report it to them. This isn't over. We're engaged. You're not in charge of us. We're in charge of you.
My name is Charles Wilson. The county is working on a climate change guilt plan, and Eureka presumably will be giving their adding to that plan. The, one of the, the primary method of transportation is walking. It, it's what everything, everybody does when the car breaks down, when the bicycle has a flat tire, and everything like that. When you run out of money, you walk. I'm a pedestrian. I've been a pedestrian for all my life. I started walking three miles with my mother to the zone change, the bus zone change. Instead of having to pay ten cents for her, it would only cost five cents. I walked five mile, four miles back and forth to high school, walked one and a half miles to elementary school. I walked, took my car five times in thirty-four years down in Los Angeles when I worked down there. I walked seven to eight miles a day. Caltrans is in control of, well, the cities in, the communities in Humboldt County are like a string of pearls. Connected by the Caltrans state highway. Now, the state highway people, Caltrans has a policy now of posting pedestrian prohibited signs. That was, you're not supposed to walk between any communities. It's the old Warsaw ghetto-type thing. In those days, the Nazis enforced it. Now we have the state highway patrol enforcing it. But the thing is, the Caltrans Sacramento policy, the United States government, let's see, whoever gives the money there, the funding policy, and the state law says that thou shalt provide a safe, alternative pedestrian route from, if you build a freeway. And I, I think you should try to encourage Caltrans to stick to the law and stick to the state policies and provide pedestrians a way to walk between communities in Humboldt County. Thank you.
This is Jadevee Wilson. Looks like everything will repeat again. After the election, masks coming back in Los Angeles. We all need to learn from history, right? You learn from the past and be prepared. Live this moment and prepare for the future. I guess people should stock up things and all that. Did the mask help? And did the vaccine help? We all know that. And okay, you should read The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy, and also another book called The Pandemic by Alex Bergerson. We know the fact. We look around, friend had problems. Like my friend I told you about that she, her husband asked her to take the shot. Three months later, she cannot walk. Put her in the nursing home. Of course, he doesn't love her. Two, and then two months later, I just found out she died in March third, and all the cases for Stephen. So we need to wake up, okay? And maybe, all the things we all think about, take care of yourself. Do your, your natural immunity. I keep saying that. I just ran into a doctor today. She said, save life. Tell me, I said, read the book. Save life. Good luck to you. I said, good luck to you, too. Now, fist booster is coming, too. Well, anyway, you take the fist booster, you never get COVID because you're dead. Seriously, there's so many people have problem. So Ryan, Ryan, I go to the health ward, I know, health ward, they have some say, let it go. Ignore it. It's, apply for the COVID. It takes time, takes time, look around, people who took the shot, what happened to them, right? And then number four, he says, don't compare, don't compare. The joint, whoever want to take it, go ahead, take it. And nobody should force people to take it. And one lady, a, a single mom, two years she worked, three jobs. She didn't get the COVID. She's able to take care of her child. Anybody have responsibility have any effect, right? If you eat a food poison, they had to pay for you. If you have a car accident, you have problem. The Big Pharma, the government let them go. You have no liability. That's wrong. You don't even know what in it, and you want me to take it? No. I won't take it for a million dollars. Okay? Number five, you talk about, okay, taste calm. And then numbers, and then six, it's called, it's on you. You decide what to do, it's on you. And number six, smile, because life is too short. Enjoy every moment. We come here every week, pie. Okay? So anyway, I sing the song over there in the, in the supervisor's meeting. Let's, we try to be love and freedom, laugh and freedom, okay? We all want freedom. Just stand by it. Thank you.
How are y'all doing tonight? My name is Donnie Creekmore. I'm with the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, HumboldtFC.com, also with Humboldt State of Mind TV, HumboldtStateOfMind.TV. Just sitting here, listening to everybody talk about the different things that they're upset about. And I'm, I like, like Deanna, you know, basically volunteering to represent a bunch of people just like the people here that are upset. Just a lot of them don't have the courage to show up and do this. This is outside the wheelhouse of most people. Outside the wheelhouse of me. First time I ever done it was this year, actually, last year. And so it doesn't surprise me that people don't wanna do this. I think that a lot of people build up in their minds, you know, that you all are some extraordinary group of people that are extraordinarily corrupt or something, or, you know, these, the, the TV and movies like to make things seem a lot different than they are. And I just see just a bunch of ordinary people that most likely are doing the things that they think are the right things to do. And so my goal here is just to kinda read you some stuff that's from, some local stuff about heroin use, and hopefully that can kinda get you to understand why people are so upset. According to the CDC, more than seventy percent of overdoses, overdose deaths from 1999 to 2019 involved opioid. This is in Humboldt County. Humboldt County Drug Task Force made fifty-three arrests last year, a significant drop from the seventy-nine arrests made in 2019 and the ninety-five arrests in 2018. It's like they're laxing, it's like they're relaxing down on it. This is no surprise. The same times the rest have declined, the opical presence of the situation has steadily increased it. Increased homeless everywhere, shouting at themselves, dotting off, and standing on the corner, high out of their minds while the community pays for it all. Forty-eight point six one pounds of heroin was seized by our Drug Task Force in 2019. Two hundred milligrams is what's the accepted lethal dose of heroin. This equates to enough heroin to kill roughly eleven thousand people. That's, you know, that's if they, obviously, if they take more than two hundred milligrams at one section. Heroin is not that dangerous. That's the Humboldt heroin myth number one. Heroin makes someone calm and a little bit sleepy, but if they take too much, then they can fall asleep forever, Dr. Karen Drexler, Director of Addiction Psychology, says. Usually, when you are sleeping, your body naturally remembers to breathe. In the case of heroin overdose, you fall asleep and essentially your body forgets to breathe. A heroin overdose can also cause your blood pressure to dip significantly and cause your heart to fail. Studies show intravenous heroin uses are three hundred more times likely to die from infectious endocarditis. Heroin use can also cause arrhythmia. Heroin use can also cause pulmonary edema. As, as pressure in the blood vessels increases, the fluid goes into the, I can't even pronounce it. Heroin, it can do some bad stuff to your blood and your kidneys. Heroin can also come with other toxic contaminants that can cause lethal effects to the user. That's the end of my time, I'm assuming. Anyways, thank you so much. I just wanted you guys to consider how dangerous heroin is and if you can do something to change it, change the issues.
There I am with the broken record again, which is ironic considering that my brother's trailer was just stolen in Albuquerque yesterday with the big troller which had been in my family for seventy years. It was stolen by, like, by junkie thieves, much as we have here. As a matter of fact, it's interesting, last week I was down on F Street between Third and Fourth at two o'clock in the afternoon, and ten of the first fifteen people that I saw were, what I could only say, reminded, made me think I was on the set of a zombie apocalypse film. We stood there and watched as one woman walked up and down the alley, talking to the ground as she was carrying a bike frame and complaining about the fact that she probably couldn't get much for it with no wheels. Another guy pulled up with his trailer full of garbage, blocked the alley, got off his bike, unloaded a bunch of garbage, started screwing screws into the sole of his shoes for a while, and then rode off, leaving all the garbage in the middle of the alley. At that time, another guy came walking across the street, flapping his arms and spinning around and following the general trajectory of a tornado, bounced off a couple buildings, and came over and almost missed a street sign as he leaned against it, flapping around, staring at it for a while. Then he turned around and went over and started fumbling with the locks on the empty businesses on that whole half of block. I went over towards him, and he stumbled on down the road. And then we looked up, we saw three zombie-like creatures coming at us from three different directions, and we would have been worried, but we were saved by our mayor, Susan Seaman, who walked up at that point and scared them off. So I took the opportunity to talk to her for about twenty minutes. And the upside to it all is that she admitted that she has no control over any of this. So I asked her then, why do you exist? And she said, I don't know. Okay, we elected you people, thinking that you did have some control over this. And you do. However, in your conversations with the city manager and the city attorney, the last couple meetings over the Big Brother polls, it's apparent that you don't believe you have any authority over anybody. You ask them questions about those polls in such a meek manner as if you're questioning whether you even have the right to question them. You don't ask hard questions about anything. You meekly, you know, plead for an answer to easy questions. You need to stand up. We elect you to be our representatives, not to be a bunch of sheep up there, meekly asking these people how they're gonna run the city. You know, because that's what it appears to me is happening right now, is unelected bureaucrats are running the city, and you people aren't standing up for us at all. You need to do that. You were elected to do that. We expect you to do that.
Do we have any other comment in-house? If not, I will go to Zoom. We have somebody online, Ash. Ash?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Ash Teeter, I'm probably familiar. My wife lost her job to the city's vax mandates. I guess I'll talk a little about that. I mean, you know, recently, there's, I think it was up in Canada, there was like a first payout for someone with vaccine inj, you know, injuries. You know, that's one thing that the, both the county and the city of Eureka, like, only, you know, only thing that really seemed to get them concerned about anything if there's any legal liability. So that, that might be something coming your way sometime soon here, if it sets a precedence. Also, just touching on the, the global, like, push for like a, you know, a world government and a new pandemic here. And they're gonna, oh, well, I guess my daughter wants to say something to you. And it would have been something totally different for her if, you know, my wife wouldn't have found another job as soon as she did, you know? Could have been a total, total different ballpark. Luckily, she did. Yep. Anyways, back to the, the whole new pandemic that they're probably gonna move in on. I said, it's like, they're, they're almost starting, as someone earlier was saying, with the mask mandates in LA. Just asking that maybe people take a little more consideration for what's happening, you know, actually locally, not just someone, you know, unelected to, to the local people here declares that there's an emergency, and it's not reflected in our, you know, local numbers or anything like that. Maybe we don't just start inflicting random, you know, random measures or mandates on the local population again. This whole, whole push to have all these global people who fly around on jets, declaring emergencies, running, you know, our, our local lives and affecting the way our, our society runs, really. It's just, it's kinda not, not leading to a, a good future. You look at, and everybody running around in Bill Gates Metaverse, living in a little, little box apartments, not going outside, just doesn't really sound like a fun future. And I, I don't wanna see my, my kid grow up in that future. I mean, there's, there's just a whole lot more to life than all these, you know, global technocrats have planned for us. I'd, I'd hope that the next time that some, some emergencies declared, that maybe our local representatives will look out for the local population a little better. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing that, I'm gonna close public comment. We're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody need to pull anything from the consent calendar? All right, then can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Everybody vote?
One moment. We do have one more public commenter that didn't raise their hand on.
Okay, can we finish this vote and then go back to public comment?
Yes.
So, okay. So everybody vote.
Aye.
All right. We got an aye from Councilmember Molten, and...
So, four yes votes, Councilmember Burgele absent, motion carries. And if we could just get the first and second, the motion maker in the second.
I made the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer seconded. And so, and we have a public comment that wasn't able to raise their hand. So who would that be?
Tommy, would you like to go ahead, please?
Yes. There were a couple things that were brought up that I wanna get out the way first. Where's, I'm back in Eureka for the first time in three years. From what everybody else is saying, where, if we do find needles on the ground, where's a good place for sharp disposal? Just for safety. And is there a public place for masks because some businesses still require masks and not all of them carry them? Is there any public accommodation for people to get masks? I, well, I do keep a few. They sometimes rip while I'm out and about. I just wanted to ask that question, and I had another question on crosswalks. On 101, there is a crosswalk that, there are a couple crosswalks near E and I think C Street that have yield to pedestrians, but the cars are parked so close to the actual crosswalks that when I'm driving, I have trouble seeing people there, so it makes it difficult to yield in time so that way they can cross. Or when I'm walking, I have to stick myself far, way farther out than would generally be considered safe just to be seen. I know you all have installed lights for some crosswalks on the 101 before the bend. Are there any other plans to add more indication lights for crossers? That's it.
All right, thank you. So generally, we don't answer questions during public comment, but you're welcome to call. No, that's okay. And a couple of quick ones. I actually could bring some masks to City Hall because we have some. If you guys want to start giving them out to individuals downstairs. And then. The needle, the hazard boxes. Where would you pick those up? I'm looking at you guys, you probably know.
So County Public Health has at least one disposal location. Myles may have additional suggestions.
There is a disposal location on I Street, south of Carson. I forget the crossroad there, Russ, maybe. Anyway, it's on I Street, just to the north of Harris. And then at City Hall, at the Fire Department, at EPD and at the Adorni. They offer free Sharps containers that you can pick up and utilize for disposal. And when they're full, you can bring them back and they'll be able to replace it and give you a new one and dispose of those needles.
All right. And you're welcome to follow up with us about other questions.
Can I just ask one more question since you, since they do give out?
Oh, could you call afterwards about, about that?
Yes.
We're not having a conversation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. What, what's, I'm very new to doing public commentary.
No, that's fine. If you go to our website, you can find our emails and you can reach out online to any one of us or you can call staff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to item G, which is Legislative Action Correspondence. Did anybody have anything that they need to add? Alrighty. Item H1, 2122 Grand Jury Report, The Sea Also Rises, and Principal Planner Kenyon will be giving us that report.
Hi, yeah, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Let me share my screen. So Humboldt Civil Grand Jury investigated the topic of sea level rise around Humboldt Bay. And they produced a report titled The Sea Also Rises that was included as Attachment 1 to the Agenda Summary for this item. And on May 23rd, they emailed the report to council members requesting a response on five of the report's findings and two of its recommendations. And pursuant to the Penal Code, the city council is required to respond within 90 days, so by August 21st. Just to give some context, as the report discussed, because of local subsidence, Humboldt Bay is experiencing the highest local sea level rise rate in California. And sea level rise is going to increase the rate magnitude and likelihood of coastal hazards like flooding and erosion beyond what we've experienced before. The city staff and city council are already prioritizing sea level rise resilience and more generally, climate change adaptation and mitigation in our work. City Council's current strategic visioning plan has an underlying commitment and dedication to addressing climate change. And it's also a priority in the 2040 General Plan, in our capital improvement program planning. And in the upcoming, it will be a priority in our upcoming waterfront Eureka Plan and LCP update. So with that context in mind, staff has drafted recommended response letter for city council that was included as Attachment 2 in your agenda packet. And. Just like us, the city, Arcata City Council, Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and Humboldt Bay Harbor District's Board of Commissioners were asked to respond to the same findings, recommendations. And speaking with their staff, it's going to be on their agendas in early August. So if council acts tonight to forward a response, we'll be the first of implicated jurisdictions to respond. But speaking with the other staff, it seems that their responses will be very, or their staff recommended responses will be very similar to ours. So for the grand jury findings, the, according to the Penal Code, we have to, city council has to agree, partially agree or disagree with each finding. And city staff generally recommends agreement with all the report findings, with the exception of Finding 3. We generally agree that regional coordination is necessary, but Finding 3 basically says that regional collaboration will take the form of a new regional sea level rise coordination entity with new ongoing costs and salaries, benefits and overhead. And we feel that the region's approach or approaches to collaboration on the issue of sea level rise should be made collectively by regional stakeholders. And there hasn't really been a broad discussion yet around forming a new sea level rise organization. So it seems premature to commit to such a group. Also, given the existing regulatory complexity around Humboldt Bay, we question whether forming a new regional government entity would be the most effective or efficient approach. Moving on to the grand jury recommendations, they asked us to, they asked the city council to respond to their first two recommendations. And pursuant to the Penal Code, you respond by either implementing the recommendation or explaining why the city, the city will not implement the recommendation. And so the first one is that before September 30th, council vote to affirm their commitment to sea level rise adaptation and make this commitment a staff priority. Council has already done this with their current strategic visioning plan, as I mentioned before. But staff recommends that council clearly implement this recommendation by reaffirming the city's commitment through adopting the resolution included in Attachment 2. The second recommendation recommends that before December 1st of 2022, the city form a sea level rise steering committee with the other implicated jurisdictions. And staff recommends that the city commit to city participation in such a steering committee. We do though recommend that council pushback on Associated Recommendation 3, which calls on the steering committee to direct implementation of a new regional organization based on a Humboldt County Planning Department report that hasn't been released yet. It's slated to be released in September of this year. They're studying potential ways we could collaborate on sea level rise. And so it seems premature to commit to the conclusions and recommendations of that report because we haven't seen it yet and the public hasn't seen it yet. In the draft response letter, we took the opportunity to highlight sea level rise adaptation work the city is already doing, such as the efforts included on this list. And I'm not going to go through this list, but I just wanted to point out that we're not just planning at this stage, we're already implementing solutions to address sea level rise. And council recently discussed the draft Regional Climate Action Plan. And you may be wondering why we didn't discuss this regional coordination effort more in the draft response to the grand jury report. The Climate Action Plan is focused on doing our part locally to reduce global greenhouse gas emissions. So it's focused on reducing and delaying sea level rise. For example, by reducing vehicle emissions and by decarbonizing our electricity sources. In contrast, the grand jury report is focused on responding to the effects of sea level rise. When it does occur, such as by elevating roadways and structures and retreating infrastructure inland. So there's definitely overlap between the two efforts. Some of the actions will, we will take to reduce greenhouse gas emission, emissions, for instance, will help with climate change resilience. And there is definitely a lot of overlap with stakeholders, but there's also different stakeholders and different actions between the two. And for instance, Redwood Coast Energy Authority is a huge stakeholder in our Climate Action Plan because a lot of our greenhouse gas emissions measures are focused on the energy sector. Whereas I don't foresee them being as huge of a stakeholder with climate change adaptation work. So as currently drafted, the cap is one regional plan with one regional greenhouse gas emission reduction goal implemented with these individual commitments for all the different jurisdictions. And it's implemented by individual jurisdictions and agencies with the help of a dedicated cap coordinator. Or that's what the draft plan is calling for. And so it could be that our sea level rise adaptation effort takes on a similar regional coordination approach, but it's a different beast, so it could, we could end up approaching it differently. So staff recommends adopting a resolution, reaffirming Eureka's commitment to addressing sea level rise to implement the first recommendation of the report. Committing the city participation in a future multi-agency steering committee to implement the second recommendation and directing staff to transmit council's response letter to the grand jury report. And I have a suggested motion when you're ready.
All right, we'll start with questions. Do you have questions from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, Principal Planner Kenyon. And I, I really appreciate that you brought up the Climate Action Plan because that was definitely a big question of mine. And I guess I'm, I'm just curious from your perspective, you know, even though I, I understand why and how they kind of address different kind of aspects of climate change. I mean, it seems so critical that they, that these efforts would dovetail together in some way because, you know, one affects the other over time, hopefully. Does it seem like there could be the possibility for some coordination around this in relationship to the Climate Action Plan?
I think from the city's perspective, city staff, I would see it being most effective if, if one city staff member was in charge of both things because they're both affecting, for instance, our transportation system. And one is trying to get us to reduce vehicle miles traveled and the other one is trying to address the fact that roads are going to flood. You know, they're both affecting roads in different ways. But I don't know if, if the, if the cap is being implemented with just one staff, regional staff member, I think it would be too much for them to be focused on both things, both reducing greenhouse gas emissions and planning for flooding and coastal erosion. Like those seem like both a lot for, for one entity to handle. But I mean, maybe, maybe an existing regional agency that we have would, would be interested in doing all that for us. I don't know. But yeah, I don't know if. This really hasn't been discussed much about like how we should coordinate regionally on this and what we should do. And if it makes more sense to task an existing regional entity with, with working on this in addition to other things, or if it would make sense to have a new, new group focused on it.
Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Bauer?
Principal Planner Kenyon, I appreciate the, the resolution is really nicely written. I wanted to thank you for that. And I, I, I guess I'll probably have more to say after public comment. I don't really have a lot of questions other than it's an extremely challenging. I, I want to support, you know, a regional approach. I think the steering committee is a great idea. But I think, you know, thinking about the, having a regional organization, it seems like it would require a lot of resources, you know. And then making those decisions for the city kind of becomes an unfunded mandate, you know, in, in essence. Like your projects are first. Well, okay, how are we going to pay for that? So I, it was a great presentation and a great resolution, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
All right. We don't have any other questions. Do we have any others? I will open up to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this issue? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back for comments or a motion. Councilmember Arroyo?
Well, I, I see sea level rise as one of the many impacts of, of climate change. So, you know, I guess my, my take is that the climate action process and the court cap coordinator could be, as Councilmember Castellano was inferring, I think, you know, could be, maybe it's the same entity or maybe they're, you know, it's one wing of what they're doing. I think it makes sense to be looking at, you know, the, the impacts to climate change more broadly in our region and coordination around, you know, the impacts of increased wildfire and increased, you know, variability in our weather cycle and sea level rise and a number of other things. And I'm encouraged by the fact that there's a cap coordinator and hope that this regional steering committee may actually transform and be more comprehensive and not just focused on sea level rise. But I agree with the staff's approach to this so far. And I think it makes sense to not, not commit ourselves to actions related to a study that we haven't seen yet. And it's not, I, I want to say in the strongest terms possible, it's not that we don't care about sea level rise as a city. We very much do and we're very committed to addressing impacts of sea level rise and as you pointed out, have already really initiated a lot of projects to do that. But I agree that the staff approach is sensible. I hope that we will, after hearing from the steering committee, come bring this back and talk about what the steering committee has recommended and what we as a city might be able to implement and how we can do the regional collaboration better. Because you're right, there hasn't been as much decision-making around this as there could be. So I guess all of that is to say, I agree with staff approach and hope that this will come back and be something we act on. Is there any sense of who is going to represent us on this steering committee?
Not yet to be determined. I mean, I would think that because of the different aspects related to this, I mean, it's typically been planning from a permitting and kind of coastal policy standpoint and then also public works because of an infrastructure standpoint. And so it'll likely be a combination of participation depending on, you know, which way it heads. But I mean, we, we have, we're saying there hasn't, there has been collaboration, there has been discussion about that. And it's, it's difficult because different agencies are at different timeframes. I think that we're ahead of the curve, which I think is great. But I think that, you know, other entities around the bay may not be as far along as the city is. And I think there does need to be collaboration to get a better understanding of what their approach is, especially as it relates to the permitting aspect, so that we can come in as, as a united voice about how we see our approach to sea level rise.
And I didn't mean to infer that there hadn't been discussions on a regional basis. But I think that there isn't one coordinating body and that's what this report has, I think, keenly pointed out. So I appreciate the grand jury making that point. I just hope that it becomes more comprehensive and includes other impacts of climate change over time. But for now, the steering committee that they have requested that we send someone to, it's like, it'd be really a bold move if we said, no, we're not going to send anybody to your steering committee. So of course we're going to send someone and, you know, I think that's a good first step, but I hope we're able to make it more comprehensive.
Councilmember Castellano?
See, generally, I, I agree with and appreciate the thorough and as Councilmember Bauer said, well-written response. There are a couple of items. There are a couple of items I'm, I'm just kind of curious from council's perspective. You know, and I completely understand that, like, hey, we're not going to promise to fund an entity that we don't know about yet, and we don't know what the, you know, what we're funding. But I, you know, and I think this is sort of in there, but I'm just curious if it might be good to explicitly state something like, we do support collaboration and regional planning, but we, you know, want to engage with how that process is determined as we go forward. If we want to, would want to include something like that within our response. And then I, I'm just curious if we would want to put some sort of footnote in there about that, you know, if other council members agree that we, we do desire some coordination at the very least with the efforts of the climate action plan.
Councilmember Bauer?
No, I, I support collaboration, of course. I mean, I think that's a great suggestions. Yeah, if you could think of the wording to modify the resolution, then if we got that, I mean, I'm, I'm good.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Yeah, in thinking about this response, I was thinking about the grand jury as a team of volunteers who do extensive research and then craft a document. And I see where they're going with it. And maybe the precise wording wasn't exactly right. And so we're sort of saying, well, no, we're not going to do that exact thing you said because we don't have all the information yet or whatnot. But I think the spirit of it is, please form a committee that's regional to collaborate on an ongoing basis. And I, I think we're all in favor of the spirit of that. So I like the idea of adding language that says something along those lines, both that we would really like it if this committee could also be doing some climate action regional coordination and that, or could interface with that, and that we are willing to be participants in shaping a process for whatever public entity. You know, the, the committee hopefully is not just going to be a committee that is an unfunded committee made up of one staff from each jurisdiction. Hopefully, they will also make recommendations about what that regional body could look like and how each of those entities could participate. So maybe if there could be a sentence that says, yes, we'll send a delegate, and we would like to participate in that. Do staff feel like that could be included? In a, in a way that-
Yeah, I think that was the intent.
Okay.
Just using different words. But yes, I think that was the intent. Obviously, if we're going to send somebody, they were definitely going to participate in trying forming some regional effort, for sure. And the climate action plan component of that, I mean, you'd have to get agreement with the others, and there are, you know, interpretation of climate action plan being kind of different than responding to the grand jury. But obviously, implementing measures in the climate action plan can decrease potentially, you know, the level of sea rise and the rate at which it happens. And so there, there is a good fit there, so both those things can be incorporated. I saw Principal Planner Kenyon rapidly writing notes. And so I don't think that adding this would require to come back again, do you think? City Attorney Luna?
No, I don't think so. I just, you know, we're, we're responding to a grand jury report, not... There's plenty of other opportunities, obviously, to think about climate change and how we're going to respond to it. So saying something here or not saying something here, I don't want it to seem to the council like we're limiting ourselves in any way to, you know, a direction because we put it here or didn't put it here. You know, that's, that's not the result of this document. We can still go forth, plan, do, implement all of these great ideas, so. I don't want you to feel limited by, by this response.
And I just wanted to point out that in the response where we disagreed about funding this group that we don't know what it is yet, we did write in there that council agrees regional collaboration is essential to effective planning and implementation of adaptation mitigation measures. And in the resolution, we wrote something to the same effect about how an effective response to sea level rise will require coordinated effort among everybody, among stakeholders. But, and then when we talked about participation in the steering committee, we said, participation in the steering committee to discuss and provide direction regarding regional coordination on sea level rise adaptation and mitigation in the Humboldt Bay region. And in their report, they talk about adaptation and mitigation, but I, but they're, but then their examples are all about, like, raising dikes and things. So I'm thinking when they talk about mitigation, they maybe just are meaning, like mitigating for sea level rise impacts. But when I read mitigation, I think about mitigating climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So I think it already kind of says that we want to provide direction, we want the steering committee to provide direction regarding regional coordination on sea level rise adaptation and mitigation. But I can make it even more explicit.
So why don't, um, why don't we try a motion? If you need to add anything to it. Or, oh, Councilmember Molton? Do you have something? Oh, you're muted.
Mayor, I just had a suggestion. Mitigation does sound to me like mitigating the effects of the sea level rise rather than what the city is doing, which is putting our money where our mouth is and trying to not make it worse. How about the word prevention?
All right. Principal Planner-
That was all I had.
Okay.
Since I have the floor, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the, the staff for their work on this and the grand jury as well, and also to say, to thank the staff and the council for the, what we are doing to put our money where our mouth is and trying as an entity, as a city, as an employer to not make the problem worse.
All right, Councilmember Castellano, then Arroyo?
I just want to say, I do appreciate that we are doing things and working to do things. Also, there is no guarantee that that's going to work out. I just want to, I mean, you know, not to be a jerk about it all. But, you know, I, I do think it's smart to plan, you know, we, we have to kind of fight this on multiple fronts. And also, you know, so, so I do appreciate the effort to, you know, look at things from the impact level that, you know, our efforts may not succeed in affecting sea level rise because it's, it's up to more people than live in Humboldt County or live in Eureka. And, you know, not to say I'm not hopeful, but also I, I do think we need to be serious and practical and, you know, to create formidable efforts, you know, to really serve our communities from a variety of angles on this.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I'd like to move approval, excuse me, adoption of the resolution of the city council responding to the Humboldt County Civil Grand Jury Report, the sea also rises. And with one addition to add, I don't think prevention should replace mitigation, but it could be an and. And I think that's the only, given what you read aloud, I believe, I feel satisfied with it addressing the needs.
I'll second that.
All righty, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? Councilmember Castellano?
I don't think I need to, you know, make a friendly amendment to the, to the motion necessarily. But I do, I think that Principal Planner Kenyon understands, you know, the, the feedback that we gave and that, you know, and I do appreciate your response to that. But, you know, I don't know. I, I just think it's important that we, you know, respond in a way that makes it clear that we're not taking this lightly. You know, or trying to negate our responsibility in regional coordination.
All right, so we have any further discussion? Are we ready to vote now? Go ahead.
All vote yes. Mayor, or Councilmember Brigal absent.
Hi, yes.
And next, we're going to move on to item H2, Pearson Properties General Plan Amendment and Zone Reclassification. This is our second time hearing this, so Principal Planner Getz, are you presenting today?
It'll be me, Madam Mayor?
Oh, hello. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you. I'm going to share my screen.
So Senior Planner Castellano?
Yes, thank you. Kristen had to present for me last time because I was out of town.
That's right, I remember now.
Yeah, so, good evening, Madam Mayor Gunn. Thank you, council. Before you this evening is the second and final review of the Pearson Properties General Plan Amendment and Zone Reclassification to change both the land use and zoning designations on a vacant parcel on West Harris Street, west of the Eureka Mall. At the July 5th council meeting, Principal Planner Getz presented the proposed project, described what the land use and zoning changes would do, described the sequence of events to approve the project, and then council held a public hearing. After the public hearing, council introduced the required ordinance. So as a reminder, the 0.21 acre parcel is located west of Fairfield Street, north of West Harris Street, and northwest of Glenn Street. It is adjacent to several parcels owned by Pearson Properties, which are on the bluff easterly of the Bay Shore Mall and Broadway. Not all of the parcels are seen here, but you can see the parcel with their main office on the left side of the screen circled in yellow. And again, to quickly reiterate, the purpose of the project is to change the land use and zoning designations in order to allow Pearson Properties to relocate their main office circled in yellow from that parcel to the adjoining parcel outlined in red. Let's see, also, the public hearing on July 5th, three people provided public comment, one of them being the applicant, and no public opposition was received. Let's see, so therefore, staff recommends council adopt a resolution to approve the general plan amendment as well as adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning map. And here's a suggested motion when you're ready. I'm happy to answer questions. And I can stop screen sharing if you have questions, and then pull it back up when you're ready. Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Senior Planner Castellano? All right, I will open it up then to public comment. Is anybody here to speak on this item? Or anybody on Zoom to speak on this item? All right, seen none. I will close public comment, and I will bring it back for a motion and discuss, or, or discussion. Councilmember Castellano?
I'll make a motion. I don't, okay. I move to a full reading and read by title only and adopt bill number 1013-CS and ordinance of the city council amending the inland zoning map to reclassify the property at the northwest corner of Fairfield and West Harris Streets from residential medium R2 to service commercial SC, and adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka approving the general plan amendment to change the general plan land use map designation from medium density residential MDR to general commercial GC for the property at the northwest corner of Fairfield and West Harris Streets, APN 008-052-011.
And I just want to note that what you read was in the agenda, and what, it's slightly different than what you wrote. So I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement, that that's what-
It said the same thing, just backwards.
Okay. I'll second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is everybody ready to vote?
Me.
Hi.
All unanimous vote, Councilmember Brigal absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now going to move on to item H3, and Senior Planner Topoluski is- Oh, okay. Actually, what time is it? Is it time for a break yet? Let's take a break, since there's no water here. We're going to take an early break. And then Scott will recuse himself, and we'll all get drinks and refresh ourselves, and come right back. Oh, there's Councilmember Castellano. So we will be coming back to hear item H3, the Texton Local Coastal Program Amendments for Cannabis. And once again, I would like to invite Senior Planner Topoluski to update us. But to start, we're going to have Councilmember Bauer.
Well, I, I need to recuse myself. This is an item that I'm pretty heavily involved in the regulation of this industry, so I think it's best if I recuse myself.
All right, thank you very much. We will come and get you when you're, when we are all done. All right, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Like you mentioned, this is our second meeting in a row to discuss our cannabis code update. Last week, we introduced the two ordinances, one for the inland and one for the coastal zone. And this week, we're hopeful to adopt. I'll give you a, a very condensed timeline of the events that lead us up to tonight. At the May 9th session of the Planning Commission, the commission approved and recommended the city council approval of our new cannabis ordinances, both coastal and inland. The city council voted unanimously to introduce the new cannabis ordinances at our last session, the July 5th session. And we're hopeful to, for adoption of the new cannabis ordinances before the city council tonight. And I just wanted to go through briefly and hit the high notes of the major changes proposed in the new code. And those are, we're going, we're proposing to condense the license types and reduce the fee schedule. The cannabis uses are proposed to be expanded to additional zones. We're, we're proposing to add additional enforcement tools. And we're including language to bring about cannabis events. And that's my quick thing, and we, we can have a discussion. I'm, I'm available to answer any questions, and I have a, a recommendation whenever you guys are ready.
All right, so do we have any questions at this point? And I can't see Councilmember Molton, so if you could turn that off then.
I don't have any questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Molton first. Did you say you do have a question?
No, I'm saying I'm good. I don't have any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Arroyo?
Since this got some press coverage, I, I only got a couple of community correspondences that were favorable, but has your department had any, anyone from the community reach out about this in, in the time since we first talked about this?
Nothing so much as general comments, but a lot of interest. Folks calling up and, and asking when, when the new application will be available. And, and just to answer those questions, put it out there. For the inland portion, if it's adopted tonight, I believe there's a 30-day appeal period. And then for the coastal section, we're going to be, part of the recommendation includes a resolution of transmittal to the coastal commission. And that could take, I think, anywhere from 60 to 90 days, depending on how, how they receive the, the changes.
And this would need to then be acted upon by their board, right?
Yeah.
Not the, it's not a staff-level thing?
I'm not 100% sure. But I will be soon.
Okay.
I think that-
I think that, you know, staff has had a lot of discussion with the Coastal Commission about these updates, and I think that we, we got to a good place with them, that's not to say that there's gonna be any changes, but at a staff level, we're hoping that there are no friendly amendments or anything necessary, and that it'd be going to their, their, their board, the Coastal Commission Board for approval, but it will take the Coastal Commission Board to approve it.
Follow on to that, is the commission, how's the commission been voting on comparable issues thus far? I mean, have they been favorable to these kinds of changes? I mean, are we expecting to break new ground? Is it gonna be a long drawn-out process? Any, any thoughts on that?
Well, based on our discussions and, Senior Planner Topoluski could add to this, but based on our discussions with them, we had a lot of back and forth about, I forget what the table was, but we had a lot of back and forth with their staff, and so based on those discussions, I have to assume that it's not anything out of the ordinary. And I think they're well aware that, not only with this cannabis code update, but our zoning code, what we're doing in the LCP update and the land use policy is we're trying to make it a consistent theme, both inland and in the coastal zone, and so, based on their response, it seems that it's not anything out of the ordinary.
Okay, thanks. And it seems like all the public interest has been favorable, like, when do I get to start taking advantage of this new process, that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, that's been my experience, I haven't had any negative comments yet, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I, I did see Principal Planner Kenyon turn on her video, she would like to chime in on anything on this, I don't want to put you on the spot, I just noticed that.
Yeah, I can't talk directly about this amendment, because I worked on it while I was at the Coastal Commission, but I can talk more broadly about how the Coastal Commission has been treating cannabis, and they're more concerned about cannabis on agricultural lands for reasons of like greenhouse proliferation and impacts on coastal resources, whereas the cities' stuff is, you know, on industrial and commercial lands, so it doesn't raise the same issues that are holding up amendments in other areas.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I was specifically thinking about areas like, I, I guess I'm just not aware of any other coastal cities that have, for example, outdoor consumption, what are, consumption lounges? That whole discussion? In the, you know, in a coastal area, ma, maybe they do exist, and I'm just not aware of them, but it does seem a little bit new. Is, is this something that's prevalent in other parts of the state?
You know, as you're aware, certain jurisdictions have voted not to allow any cannabis activity, but in ones that have approved it, yeah, it, it's, it's a coming upon us now, and, yeah, we only have, we have one outdoor consumption lounge, and I, I'm in discussions with another local facility that would like to, to pursue that as well, but they're in a denser neighborhood, so I have been in touch with the state, and this follows up on Councilmember Moulton's question last time, that the state does have quite a bit of standards and like, kind of metric fact-based ideas for us to go about it, so that was nice to see, because it's nice to look to the state in this regard, or at this point, because we are kind of embarking on a new journey here, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano.
Thanks. And, and it doesn't sound like it, based on your previous responses, but no businesses reached out with concerns about taking away the cap on cannabis businesses?
No. You mean, any existing cannabis businesses, or? No, no. I kinda had predicted that they, I might hear from somebody, but no.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, I think we're done with questions, and I will open it up to public comment. Is anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Castellano.
I'll make a motion, but before that, I just want to say, I was at a meeting with a couple of members of the, the Hotel and Lodging Alliance yesterday, and mentioned this to them, that, you know, we were moving forward on outdoor events, and they seemed very excited about it, so I, I think it's gonna really serve a role in our community, so thank, thank you for, for that. With that, I move to wave full reading, read by title only and adopt bill number 1015-CS and ordinance of the City Council amending the text of Title 15, chapters 155 and 158, updating the City of Eureka Cannabis Ordinance, and wave full reading, read by title only and adopt bill number 1016-CS and ordinance the City Council amending the text and local coastal program consistent with the objectives of Title 10, Chapter 5, regarding updates to the City of Eureka Cannabis Ordinance, and adopt a resolution of transmittal of the City Council transmitting to the Coast, California Coastal Commission for certification and amendment to the implementation plan portion of the adopted and certified City of Eureka local coastal program pertaining to cannabis.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
I'll let Katie Moulton have that one.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Castellano, a second by Councilmember Moulton, and is everybody ready to vote? Let's do it.
Aye. Three, three yes votes, Councilmember Brugel and Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And I will go and fetch Councilmember Bauer, let him know he can return. Hold on. All right, we are ready to move on now to our reports and action items. Item I1 will be Senior Planner Castellano to talk about the Eureka Waterfront Plan.
Yes, well, hello again. Thank you for the introduction again, Caitlin Castellano, I'm the project manager assigned for the waterfront Eureka Plan on the city side, and tonight, I get the pleasure of introducing you to Rose Newberry of Dudek, our consultant that we selected through the RFP process, and she's also the project manager. So Rose will be presenting to you this evening, and then we are asking for feedback and comments from you and the public on the draft themes and development scenarios, as well as the type and form and scale of buildings that you'll see shortly, that are included in the waterfront Eureka Plan, the draft scenario, so take it away, Rose.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Caitlin, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here tonight. I'm gonna share my screen, and I'll look at some nicer to the waterfront and talk through the plan. All right, is my screen showing up normally?
It's, you can see the full screen, or, yeah, there, now you're perfect, not slideshow.
Right. All right. So the purpose of me being here tonight is to talk about the waterfront Upland, which will be a roadmap for the development and redevelopment of vacant underutilized sites and buildings along Eureka's waterfront. Another purpose of this plan is to make sure that there is a vast development potential to increase 115 housing units in the waterfront area. So tonight, we're gonna go over the plan, what we've heard so far in our two public workshops, ask for your input and comment, and provide information about how to provide yourself feedback later as the plan progresses. This is the, the planning area, it includes three districts, the commercial bay front, which is waterfront and First Street to the bay, Old Town, which is from J Street, about the co-op, both, I think, around this Old Town, and then the library district, which includes Carson Mansion, and of course, the library. These districts were mapped and described in the 2040 general plan, and the soup plan's job is really to implement that and that vision through the soup plan process. So the role of soup plan beyond the general plan is, is to provide more fine detail than the general plan, it also provides sequel streamlining, so the development can happen more easily in the waterfront, and then, and does that by including straightforward development with standards, so with both the general plan, but also local coastal plan and Coastal Commission, which is the other important legislative consideration in the planning area. It's supposed to create areas, vacant areas, into something like this. We're at halfway through our process, so we've had our first workshop and website launch in March this year, we then updated the, our, the website with some frequently asked questions. Last month, we had our second workshop, and the survey went live on the website. Last week, and, and right now, we presented to planning commission and yourselves, next month, or later next week, and then in August, we're gonna be interviewing key stakeholders to get a more refined view of how to regulate the waterfront, and then later this year into the winter, there'll be a draft plan and adoption process. So what we've heard so far, both in our, in our two workshops and surveys, to increase housing density in the planning area, to provide resident and tourism serving uses, and then safe and vibrant street gates, everyone feels comfortable day and night. In our first March meeting, we broke it down into the three district areas from the general plan, and asked what was describing, or one or two words, how they felt, we used those results to get priorities for each of those districts. So the first waterfront, it was adaptable, revitalized community asset, for Old Town, it's historic, connected and a community hub, the library district, we heard, should be safe, remain residential, and that there's a lot of opportunity. In this effort, there were three alternative futures to help participants and planning team think about what potentially could happen in the waterfront area. These scenarios were managed retreat, which really focused on sale rise, very after tonight's meeting, and the second was tourism visiting serving, so thinking about the waterfront really as an external visitor asset, and bringing people in to shop and dine at, in the waterfront, in the lastest communities, which focused on people being able to live, work, and play, shop in the waterfront without the use of a car. These scenarios and the end plan based on feedback tonight, from the, the public, will be one preferred scenario that will guide the developments, we're not really picking between the three, trying to figure out what people, like yourselves and the public, really like about those to create the preferred scenario. So I'm gonna go over those really quickly, what that could look like, so managed retreat, limiting new developments, so our hazard areas, and intensifying development in other areas, like we said, we, one of the key goals is to increase housing units by 115, so if you're not gonna build in the bay front, making sure those units and uses are in the library, Old Town district. So how may this look? Open space, public access to reuse in the commercial bay front, high density mixed use in Old Town, and increased housing density in the library district. So for the bay front, some temporary tourism uses, and these are just illustrative, I should say, these are just kind of helping both yourselves and the public understand what this code looked like, this isn't what the city's building per se, this is what would be allowed. So an Old Town and managed retreat, much denser development, and, you know, those are the other scenarios with commercial, and then a library district, town homes, really get to accommodate the development outside of hazard areas, less dense than Old Town, but still denser than you'll see in other scenarios. For tourism visitor serving, focusing on tourism, and that look at hotels and conference centers, art gallery of work uses, and then bed and breakfasts, boutique restaurants, housing above, again, really focusing on tourism. Just go back, like a, a conference center in the, in the bay front. Or art uses in Old Town. Boutique restaurants and, and, and B&amp;Bs in library district. Our last scenario, again, focusing on live workshop, everyday uses in the district, look like mixed use restaurant and retail housing above, and the bay front, residents are in commercial and housing above, and Old Town, small residents are in uses condos above in the library district. So and this bakery, other everyday uses along the corridor, in Old Town, still pretty dense housing and grocery store uses, and the library district, maybe a daycare and town homes. So we asked me which was like the best, complete communities was by far and away at the preferred scenario, but in general, we did really hear about wanting increased housing, eyes on the street, walkability, open space across scenarios. So for tonight, again, we're looking for your comments on the district themes and priorities, that your thoughts on the planning scenarios, or anything you thought we missed. And then I want to remind everyone, council and the public, to visit our website, which is waterfronteureka.com, where you can scan your camera, the screen for that QR code, there you'll find interactive mapping, our survey, you can watch YouTube's of our long workshops we've done in the past, and there's also a comment box, where you can sign up to get more information, and just provide comment on the plan, and sign up for emails, so you'll know about the workshops we have coming up. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen, and we'd love to open up to comments and questions from council.
All right, seeing they have questions. Councilmember Arroyo.
Since I wasn't able to participate in the workshops, could you share a little bit about what the format was, and how, how people were able to give that input? I know they were held online, but could you share a little bit about how, like, was it, the first workshop was an introduction, the second one was refining ideas, or were they both kind of the same? What, how did that look?
Sure, so the first one, and they're with virtual, like you said, the first one in Mark was really about understanding how people felt about the existing conditions, and kind of reorienting and refreshing the vision from the general plan, and making sure that was still pretty around track. So the way we collected feedback was through polls, but also through word clouds, so we let people have pretty open-ended answers to how they felt about each of the districts that we presented, to kind of get our direction, and then the second meeting was focused on those scenarios, so kind of providing some potential options that probably waterfront could develop, and then getting, again, open-ended and full feedback on those. We are trying to build the public sessions, so that they kind of go from this initial visioning, that reaction, following us across the plan, to provide that feedback as, as standards get developed.
Thank you. And then on the workshop theme, I, I did hear that there were some folks in the community who would like to see a hybrid workshop in the future, and I, I understand that that's a possibility, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that to Caitlin, she can, there are a few sheets, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so there should be an updated schedule on the website, and the Planning Commission meeting was in-person and hybrid, this meeting is in-person and hybrid. The next workshops are all gonna be either at the Planning Commission or the City Council, so we do believe that we'll have a draft specific plan, and the, and the draft preferred scenario to present sometime in November, so we'll go to Planning Commission first, and then it'll come to City Council, and those will be hybrid meetings, and then, like she said in the schedule, in November, or, I'm sorry, yeah, November, and then, basically all the meetings we're having for, moving forward, will be at the Planning Commission and City Council, and they'll be hybrid.
All right, any other, Councilmember Castellano?
Let's see, thanks, I, I'm excited to see where this is going. How many people have participated thus far?
I, I know we had over 150 survey respondents, and the survey's definitely our widest net, because it's the, the easiest one to do and the lowest bar, and I can check the, the workshop results, I believe it was over 40 for at least the first one, I can't remember the second one, but the website's getting really good traction, and we can dig up those numbers for you. Uh, but the website's getting really good traction and we can dig up those numbers for you.
Yeah, Rose, I can, if I could piggyback on you, I think it was about sixty people that participated in the fir- first workshop and then. About the same amount registered for the second workshop, but then there was um. Uh, conflicting the, 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 the hearing on the insurrection. And so a lot of people actually dropped out to do that. So it was about thirty, little, about thirty people for the second meeting. And we didn't know that it was scheduled at the same time as that hearing, so.
Sure. You could never plan everything to avoid everything, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, those are still great numbers. And then I was just curious for the um stakeholder participation. Um. How are you soliciting uh folks to participate in those stakeholder meetings?
Yeah, I guess I'll take that one again. Um, so we're, we have various groups. Uh, one group is the Eureka Main Street. So they got an invitation, every member did, and they could choose, well, first we did a doodle poll to. Get availability and they did get invites. And so they could choose whether they wanted to participate or not. Then another group was. Yuri, um, Eureka Chamber of Commerce, and that went out to the whole membership as well, uh, which is like five hundred members, but I was told we'd be lucky if we got fifty. I'm not quite sure on those numbers, maybe even less. Uh, and then as part of that group staff from the Eureka Visitor Center. Um, we're invited as well as um the Eddie Alexander representative. Then we're going to have a stakeholder group with Cal Poly Humboldt. And also we're having a uh commissions and committee stakeholder group. We have sent. Uh invitations out to all the chairs to, and then this month they are elect, appointing. Uh, two representatives from each of our commissions and committees to participate in that stakeholder group.
I'm so excited to hear about the commission and committee stakeholder group. That's great. Very exciting.
It, it, if I could real quick, I think it would be, um, since this is just a report, I think I can make com- okay, great. Um.
Oh, do we, we do public comment on this, right?
Oh, okay. Oh, I'll wait. I will wait. Um, I'll wait. Okay.
Okay. I have a question, um, especially about the surveys and you have the, you know, cool little QR code. Do you guys have those hanging up all over kind of the? Old Town library area and storefronts or? Where people can be walking around with a little sign that says, what do you want to see here? Something like that?
I don't think so, but that's a good idea. Um, maybe we can afford an email to the Eureka Main Street and ask them to maybe post a flyer on their windows.
Great. We could uh maybe do it down with some of those, the library and things too.
Great idea. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we go to public comment? All right. Is anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing that, I will bring it back and I'll ask council member Castellano if she has a comment.
Great. Um, how did you know? Um, so. I would just love for, so I've been convening a group of people around the cultural arts district in Eureka. Uh, of, maybe I'm biased, but you know, really thoughtful community members. And as we know, um, much of the waterfront district. Uh, also includes the cultural arts district. Um, so. I would love for that to be another stakeholder group, if that's at all possible. Um, I think they would have some great things to contribute if it's not too late to add another stakeholder group. Um, and then someone, maybe this is a question and a comment, but um. Uh, someone or Jay Tugman, who uh he has a um, a dream maker that's the Kimisu Sister City program. Uh, that does pin pal or he, he's doing specifically a lot of pin pal work with um. Kids in Kimisu. Um, and I know that he's been working a lot with council member Moulton on that. But um, he had a great idea for like kind of a friendship park around the waterfront, but he was just asking. Um, how he might engage best to have a, maybe a conversation on the process. Would that be through a? Stakeholder group or how, how could he engage with that?
Well, I, I, I'll take that one senior planner Castellano. Um, there are opportunities. Um, I know that we have a um. A donation, an estate that was given to the city, the Grace Martin Memorial Fund, that is going to be funding a new um. Playground, uh bicycle amphitheater. Um. Uh, if there's a component of that potentially, I think that the best idea would be to reach out to, to me and then. Get me more information. I could probably direct them in the right direction to see what, um, what the possibilities are.
Council member Royal.
I have a question about. The opportunity sites that are identified. So I'm looking at the website and. Um, I, I guess when I first saw, saw this, I thought. This percentage of acreage identified as underutilized. I was thinking that. I, I, I'm not sure what I thought that was, but I can't help but observe, living in this town. That there are, there are a fair number of buildings for sale or for rent. Is that? Uh, and so it kind of made me wonder if that's what we're calling underutilized or is underutilized, um. Yeah, what, could you say more about what underutilized means in this context and how we'll be fleshing that out a little bit more as we move forward?
Absolutely. So underutilized is actually a really simple calculation. It's just the land value. Uh, it was rather the improvement values of the building value uh divided by the land value. Uh, we ignore single point homes for this uh sake, but if the um land, if the improvement value was less than the land value. It's considered underutilized because for things that are often playing homes. Generally, we see that if the building is worth more than the land it's on, it won't redevelop. It won't get totally torn down and, and built into something new. Um, but if the, uh, the value is less, we typically see that as a site that in the next twenty years would be redeveloped. So that's, that's how it looked at. It's just. Sites we think that are likely um to change. And then obviously vacant is just vacant.
So likely to change is just seen as a um, a factor of the value to, so it's not um. Like if a property's been vacant for twenty years, that's not necessarily an indicator that it's quote underutilized. It's just maybe a vacancy. There's, that's not a part of the equation.
No, I mean, if we get more refined data, we can always include it, but the, the rise you're now on the website just reflects a very basic calculation of. Land value or improvement value over land value.
Can I, I want to ask a question based on that too, because uh those. I thought those were terms that were picked kind of by the participants, the workshop participants, yet under. Um, underutilized seems like a very objective kind of statement based on what you're saying. So. How were, were people given words to choose from or did they just come up with themselves? It just seems like a, that one stood out to me as a word that I was like, huh, that's not what most the public. You know, the public doesn't usually be like, say, things look really underutilized, so.
Uh, the public did. I, I didn't, obviously I don't know how many words public it was offhand, but that did come up as their own term. When we're using in the plan and it's defined, a nice little sidebar, uh, we are using it in the sense of land, regard over land value. Uh, the public did in their own, right, um, use that word to describe areas of the plan. I think probably in a more general sense, they have tax data um on their desk like, like, like I do.
Okay. So then maybe the people who were saying underutilized were thinking vacancies.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that might be worth um fleshing out a little more as we kind of. Present the numbers to the people at our upcoming, you know, city council workshops. Um, because I think that's a really interesting tool. And I anticipate that people say underutilized and they just mean like. It, it don't look good, you know, like it's not, it's not being used in the way that I would like it to be used. Or it doesn't contribute to the community right now in the way that I would like it to. Um, rather than like this, like uh, the mayor is saying, a more objective. Tool, which I, I think is, is really interesting and a cool predictor, but it's just not one that I had really been familiar with. So. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, council member Bauer.
And, and I think to answer my question, because I saw when you're, you're doing the kind of change in time. There's some historic buildings that vanished, you know, with these new, with these new structures like, oh, I don't know if that's going to fly, but um. But I get, I get the concept of it. I mean, I think it's great and I um. I, the process is, you've been done a ton of outreach and I hope uh. More people participate because this is like, this is the future of Eureka. And you, you know, the numbers are good, but again, I wish there were a thousand, you know, residents that were doing it and. Doing the best you can and it's, it's looking really good. I appreciate your work. Thanks.
Council member Royal.
I so guiltily asked another question. Um, so in, in thinking about these kind of, so we have unconstrained vacant sites. I assume that's vacant. Buildable, no zoning constraints or what, or whatnot. Constrained vacant sites and then surface parking lots and then underutilized. I'm sure that's not all the types of sites, but are we also looking at? Does constrained vacant sites? Hmm. I guess what I was going to ask is are we looking at airspace? Are we looking at places where um we could build up, but? The current building is not, is not structured that way as part of this plan.
The short answer is no. Um, I. We are aware that, you know, not every, I don't think anyone is built to be, except that you could be. So we're all aware of the development potential writ large. Um, but we kind of use, any site can redevelop under the, the new regulations, not like, oh, only underutilized. We really use that. Um, calculation for sequel purposes to make sure that we're not allowing development in the soup plan that's beyond. A general plan, both for consistency, the general plan um had a lot of outreach in it and we think it's valuable to implement it. That's the, the purpose, but also um. Creating a sequel Pandora's box is not the goal of the plan. Um, so. For the, the land use perspective, that's not directly looked at and just how we did the math and kind of back map in sequel assumptions. Um, but in the planning itself, we are certainly aware that basically every site. Has the right to build up. Um, and that there's just potential in every site um in the waterfront.
Except if you're on a local register of historic properties or a property, we're not just going to let you ministerially demolish it or build up or changes. The Historic Preservation Commission is still there and we'll still have to go through that process.
Any other comments? Did you feel like you guys got what you needed to work on this for now?
I think we got some good feedback. Thank you.
Oh, wait. Council member Royal has another question.
This is like my favorite thing in the world is a new plan, so pardon me, but I need to, I guess the, the last thing I, I wanted to say. As you were going through your slideshow and talking about interim uses, um, I got excited. Um, so when we talk about managed retreat and we include potentially interim uses. Um, how, how are we going to be treating or framing that in this plan? Um, once it's fully formed, are we going to be looking at? Potential sites for recommendations um for interim uses or types of um uses that might be appropriate in areas where we're otherwise considering it managed retreat?
This is, I think, going to be the, really the crux of the plan is understanding that silver eyes is slow and um. It's going to happen in waves, right? You have things that are wet once, once a year before they're wet every month. Um, and so I, I think, and this is me working a lot with kind of the coastal commission standards. Will we looking at uses that make sense and then also time horizons that make sense? Um, we do have a good understanding of where geographically we need to be really concerned about silver eyes, um, especially just from. A coastal development standpoint. Um, so yes, we'll be looking at, looking at special uses and then also the timeframes of what you're permitting. Uh, what useful life is um throughout the plan. So I think that's going to be. I agree, the most exciting part of the plan is really thinking through how the waterfront is going to change um in the next fifty years and. Uh, hopefully definitely well with silver eyes.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm really, I want to register my excitement for that and, and really hope that it's um featured prominently because. I think when we talk about miniature tea, people do not. Think about what could be on the site in that time um and what that might look like. And I, I really hope that. Um, we, we take this opportunity to flesh that out really well. So thank you for featuring that and including it.
All right. Well, thank you for your presentation and uh we will look forward to seeing how things progress. The waterfront is a favorite topic of many, many people in this ca- community, so.
Thank you so much.
All right. And uh same general area of town, but this time we have director Gervin, the ever patient director Gervin. I don't, I too.
All right. First off, I think there are several people, namely my wife, that would probably disagree with uh. Describing me as ever patient, but. All right. So uh, good timing. Um. Good timing tonight after a long time of discussions of what could be done with the C to F street area. In the shorter term, while we're waiting for some of these longer term uh plans to develop and development to happen. Uh, staff has a presentation on uh one of those ideas uh that, that is in line with what council was asking for. Uh, in the past several months and uh got a quick little presentation for you. So just some background, uh, the C to F street site has been the subject of a lot of planning, both the C to F design charrette process from twenty sixteen. The waterfront specific plan that you just saw about tonight. And again, we're looking at what could be done in the shorter term uh to help revitalize that site, create more energy. And uh do that while we're waiting for longer term, larger scale developments to happen. Looking at the area, some of the, some of the stuff that's going on, we have uh Maticat Plaza on the west side. Uh, a lot of energy going on there, both with um. Events happening, businesses with the restaurant and the Maticat and all that. At the other end of the area, you have uh Coast Guard Plaza and more businesses and activity there. And in the middle, you have the uh redevelopment in process of. The old opera house building, old co-op building, whatever you want to call it, uh for Dick Taylor chocolates. And so in looking at ways to utilize this area in the shorter term. Staff uh thought it might be good to look at, how could we capitalize on that new energy of the redevelopment of that first and E Street building for Dick Taylor? And what we saw is this, this private property area that's adjacent to their building. Uh, and also adjacent to the large gravel lot that's city owned. And it, it's uh bordered by First Street on the south and D Street on the west. And we thought that might be a good spot to, to try and make some improvements and uh help. Capitalize, like I said, on the new energy from the redevelopment of that property. So what do we do? Uh, first, we met with the property owners and engaged a consultant. Big uh shout out and thank you to Dustin Taylor and Adam Dick from Dick Taylor Chocolates. As well as the staff from K Bujah Architects, Cash and Valerie and Morgan. They all uh took this on, on a volunteer basis. Uh, they didn't charge the city for this work. They're just excited about that site. Uh, they were involved with the C to F street design charrette. They did the plans for the redevelopment of the building and they want to see more happen there. Uh, in addition to those stakeholders, we had uh city staff, including myself, principal planner Canyon. And uh economic, economic development manager, uh Swan Asbury involved in the process. We did site visits to look at the building. How is it going to utilize that portion of the site? How does it, it interact with the streetscape? And what are some of the other influences in the area like the wind, the sun, uh, where's, where is that weather coming from? What are the views of the bay and how do the, the streets interact with the site? After those site visits, we had a couple of meetings back and forth with uh, with K Bujah Architects where they. Developed several concepts and we. Iterated on those a bit, reviewing them and refining them and can finally consolidated multiple uh concepts into one. And then finally, without being able to give them the presentation with visuals like this. Uh, we did present the general idea to the Eureka Main Street Board last week and they were receptive about more activity uh expanding at the site. So here's the concept. Uh, if you look at the photos here, you've got the, the. So here's the concept. If you look at the photos here, you've got the, the newly rehabilitated Dick Taylor building with their portion on the west side there in the darker gray. The green portion on the right will be Humboldt Bay Coffee Roasters. And the, the underutilized remaining vacant portion of their property immediately to the west of the building. So it's there that we looked at what could be done to capitalize on that new activity of the building and make it even better. And what was ultimately developed is this, like I said, combination of different elements of, of various concepts that were looked at earlier on in the process. There is a portion that's an open sidewalk court that's about 30 feet deep immediately behind the sidewalk along the street. That would be open all the time. It would include plantings. It would include, include some seating. It would include a raised area for a stage that could be concrete, could be like composite decking material so that there could be events there that would communicate well with the street. Behind that would be a fenced area that would be fenced for security. It wouldn't be open all the time. It would only be open during events and it would be sheltered from the wind coming off the bay by the shipping containers at the back. Those shipping containers could have a few different elements, including storage. There could be another stage type of thing there. There could be restrooms that would serve that event space and potentially a kitchen, though there's also the idea of allowing a food truck to come in and maybe serve during those events. A lot of different ways to make it work. And then throughout there would be sturdy and semi-permanent but relocatable furnishings that could last for a long time, but at the same time be relocatable in the future should the property owners ultimately decide to develop something more on this part of the site, which is something they've expressed a desire to do at some point well down the road. Looking at it in plan view, if you can see my cursor here, got the sidewalk court immediately behind the sidewalk with, like I said, some seating, the stage area, and then a path that goes back to the enclosed event space that's bordered by a fence on two sides and shipping containers to protect it from the wind on the north and, and northeast corner. Just a couple more renderings here of what that would look like from within the space. And the goal was to make this be a, a semi-permanent development that could be in place for a number of years and could serve that space for a while. But at the same time, at the end of, of this, a lot of the elements could be relocated somewhere else. They would be sturdy enough that they wouldn't degrade over time and could be relocated. So think of things like concrete tables perhaps, or concrete planters with trees in them that lights could be hung from and those could all be relocated in the future. So what do we do next from here? The idea is to finalize the plans, tearing off of the concepts, concept that's shown here and then include other elements that make sense in that general vicinity. Like I said, the gravel lot at the foot of D Street is immediately adjacent to it. Staff has already contemplated improvements that need to be done to that for the longer term to serve that area better. Those would require a coastal development permit, so why not include that work in this plan? We intend to do that in the coming months. The next step would then be to obtain permits, including a city, a city issued coastal development permit. The estimate is that that would probably be about a three-month process, starting from when the plans are finalized, which could be within roughly a month. So if you, you know, figure four months from now, we could look at having a coastal development permit issued. Then the big one is seek funding. Right now, there are no funds allocated at the project. We're working on refining the cost estimate. I don't have that for council tonight, but once we do have an estimate, look at, at seeking funding to make it happen. And the good thing is that if we included all of this work in one coastal development permit, starting any one part of it, like the grading and drainage work that needs to happen to the first and D lot, that would vest that CDP and then the, the other work could really be done at any time. And then the final step in, in the process would be to execute a lease and then do the construction. And what would that lease look like? As I mentioned, these improvements would be made, at least as they're contemplated here on private property. The intent would be that the city could lease that property from the property owner for little or nothing and affect those improvements and they would remain in place for the term of the lease, whatever the term that is. And then at the end of the lease, there would be a negotiation about, did the improvements stay in place at some cost to the property owner, or did those improvements leave and go somewhere else onto city property? So those are the basics. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them. Again, big thanks to Adam Dick and Dustin Taylor and everyone over at Cash Bujah's office and city staff as well. And yeah, happy to answer questions.
Seeing they have questions. Councilmember Bauer.
This is, I think, a super cool project to undertake. What kind of funding could we, could we look for? You know, I mean, it seems kind of like, it's almost like a public-private partnership in, in essence. Is there funding out there for something like this?
I think we could be creative in, in looking at that. I think grant funding, there's possibilities. I think actually the, the grant that we got for, that we went after for Cooper Gulch, the most recent Prop 60, would, this would be a good vehicle for that. There's a possibility for that. And then also, we've had discussions with people that are interested in a similar concept, but are private entities and connecting them with the property owners there currently, there's a possibility for that as well.
And second question, what kind of lease are we talking about? Five, 10-year? I mean, we're still.
I, I would guess it would be somewhere in that range. That seems to make sense.
Okay. That's all for now. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. If there are no questions, I'll open it up for public comment. And I can't see if I Councilmember Molten has any, but she'll speak up, I think. Is there any public comment on this item online? If not?
Actually, I do have a question, Mayor.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm curious what, why the public-private partnership instead of using the massive amount of public land that's right there?
Sure. So two reasons. First off, you know, there is a lot of planning work already underway for the public portion of the property there and a lot of interest in that from various entities that could potentially develop that in a shorter time period than these improvements might be in place. And like I say at the beginning, looking to capitalize on the energy coming from this rehabilitated building, a lot of people are excited about it and it would be, you know, staff believed it would be good to have improvements immediately adjacent to the building that could capitalize on that energy rather than a dead space in between and then other improvements on city property somewhere farther away.
I would add to that too, that, you know, it's very windy down there and having those buildings that are adjacent to it could serve as a windbreak that, you know, typically comes from the north, but I think that helps with the environment there for, be more conducive for something like this.
I see. Thank you.
So when I mentioned people being excited about the waterfront, what they're really, really excited about is, is the C to F. So it feels very exciting to see something. I mean, I can't wait for Dick Taylor to get open. That'll be great, but this additional thing is just another step forward. Councilmember Royal.
It sounds like you're seeking authorization. Do you want that to come in the form of a motion? Do you want us to all just go, yeah, we like this idea? I'm sorry. What?
I know. I, I have comments at some point, but I think we're not there yet, right? We're not.
No, we're commenting.
Oh, gosh.
We do have someone in the public who would like to comment.
Okay. All right. We'll just jump all over. So we're going to go back to public comment and Jennifer Calt.
Hi, Jennifer Calt, Humboldt Bay Keeper. Thanks for taking my comment. I wasn't really sure how to do that for a second there. I am wondering, this sounds like a really cool plan, but I was wondering if staff can speak a little bit to the contaminated site that is on that property. It looks like it's a, an act, an open contaminated site that's been active for, inactive for quite a few years. And I wondered if you had done some research on the constraints around that or what sort of assessment and cleanup maybe the city is working on with the brownfields grant or anything like that? Thank you.
Thank you. So now I will close public comment and I will bring it back for comments and perhaps somebody would like to ask about that specifically. Is there a contaminated site on there?
I'm not familiar with, with what research has been done. I do know that our staff in engineering is actively engaged in the brownfields assessment grant and whether we've got something going at this site, I'm not aware, but certainly that would be part of any development application is figuring out what those constraints are. How do we address them? I can say that the nature of the improvements contemplated right here, none of them would really be ground disturbing, other than the, the grading that I said adjacent, that would be more, you know, going up rather than into the existing grade to address some of the challenges there. But with the, the waterfront sidewalk court as it stands, that's pretty much at grade and above with no ground disturbing activity down below. But certainly, analysis of all that would be part of the coastal development permit process and will ensure things get taken care of as they need to.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Royal.
So this is all part of the property that, this isn't city property.
That's correct. It's adjacent to the property.
Part of, part of the property that already is being redeveloped. Would their existing analysis and permitting cover that?
The work that they're doing is all within the building, other than some sidewalk work out front and utilities to serve the building. So I, I don't know, but I, my guess is that their analysis really didn't go that far.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano.
Sorry about my confusion there earlier. So I, I just have a couple of comments. I mean, one, I'm very excited about this. So thank you so much for bringing it back and, and bringing it forward. You know, I, I do hear from people all the time about, you know, how wanting to do something with, with that kind of area in Eureka. And I can really appreciate that it would serve, you know, visitors and residents alike. Let's see. I just want to say, I understand having the windbreak of the containers, but it could be cool to have some sort of plexiglass wall somewhere in there so that some of the bay would still be visible, just because it's kind of special being right there on the bay. You know, the marina is visible from across. And then I remember someone at the Eureka Main Street meeting, I believe it was Nicholas Cole, bringing up that if, when we do the improvements to the parking area, if we could kind of readdress some of the walking way from the boardwalk, I, I see that it, it kind of, that tying into D Street there, I think is really great. And then just making sure there's a clear connecting point. That's all I have to say.
All right. Any other comments or feedback? Councilmember Royal.
I had a similar thought about plexiglass or something slatted so that you could see through, but it was actually, although now I agree, I'd also like to look at the bay. But I was thinking about how people tuck back in there behind those buildings because it's a little bit hard to see from the road. And so just making sure that that little, the panhandle of the parking lot or of the gravel lot is not too hard to see from the road because that big chunk of buildings does make it so that people kind of want to tuck back in there. I see the chief nodding a little. I don't know if you, if you notice that also while doing patrols, but yeah, so that it would serve two purposes to be a little transparent there. And I'm in favor of authorizing pursuit of funding for this with the, you know, inclusion of the comment that was raised by Jen Calt about wanting to make sure that we're addressing any necessary brownfield research or mitigation. And it seems like there are some ways to move forward with interim uses for sites like this, even in those conditions. So seems like a cool opportunity.
All right. And I think that, that's the motion, right? So it's a.
Yes.
Authorization motion. All right. Councilmember Bauer seconded that. And it doesn't look like it's authorization. Do we just want to do consensus or do we want to do a vote? We've got a motion and a second. So huh?
Do you have a motion?
Let's just vote. We'll just do it. Councilmember, I'll let them ask you, Councilmember Molten. That's how it works.
Oh, yes. Let's go for it. We'll figure out how to pay for it.
Unanimous vote. Councilmember Brugel absent. Motion carries.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item I three, former Chamber of Commerce, Dolo relocation. And again, Director Gervin.
Here I am. All right. So as I stated in the agenda summary, in 2018, with the surplus of the former of Chamber, former Chamber of Commerce property at Broadway and Hawthorne, the council authorized staff to negotiate the sale of the property and that was done to a local LLC that's looking to develop a hotel there. With that action in 2018, council directed that two elements of the site, the Blue Star plaque and the dolos that's there should remain unless a move could be negotiated. During the subsequent negotiations, the city agreed to take care of that move. And it's taken us quite some time, but we now do have a plan for what could be done with the dolos. That involved work with landscape architect, city staff and the coast guard to develop a plan for kind of reimagining Coast Guard Park and doing some improvements there. And at the same time, having somewhere close by that the dolos could be sighted, hopefully somewhat reducing the cost of the move. Unfortunately, what we found is that although that concept for Coast Guard Park is really great and there are elements of it that could be phased in over time, the move itself is quite a bit more expensive than staff contemplated when agreeing to move it. We're looking at an estimate of just under $50,000 to move this 42-ton concrete structure less than a quarter of a mile, basically. There's a lot of heavy equipment that has to be brought up here, a nine axle low bed trailer, a large crane, a lot of traffic control to shift northbound Broadway over at night and then move the dolos into the position at Coast Guard Park. So because that cost is, you know, somewhat higher than anticipated and about five times as much as the $10,000 estimate for demolition on site, staff believed it would be prudent for council to revisit that decision that was made in 2018 and decide whether to allocate additional funding to accommodate the cost of this move or direct instead the dolos be demolished on site. So that's the, the decision that we're asking council to make tonight. If you want more details about any, any of those elements, including the concept for Coast Guard Park, I'd be happy to fill you in.
Can I just ask a history question? Like, how and why, when, when and how did we move those there in the first place?
I think the plaque says that it's been there since 1972. I don't know how it came to be that, that there's a dolos there, but it is. And now we've got to deal with it.
I, I would, I would guess that it may have to do either with the construction of the jetty or some sort of rehab of the jetty at some point in time that that was being brought up there. I can't imagine that it was brought up here to just be placed there. I'm sure it was a part of another project.
It's just really interesting to know how much it costs to get it away from there. I'm like, it didn't just float there. Okay. Anybody else have real questions? Councilmember Bauer.
So, um, yeah, that's a, quite an expense to, to move that structure. Has anybody, any private entity interested in helping out?
No one has, you know, reached out, but again, but then again, no one really knew that this issue was out there. So that's something that we could try to get the word out about, whether someone is interested in taking the dolos off the city's hands or interested in funding the move. taking the dolos off the city's hands or interested in funding the move. Either one of those could be possibilities. And I would say that up until, if, if council were to direct staff to instead demolish on site, up until that happens, we'd look at other options.
I, I have had one private party that said that they would be interested in, in, in having it, but didn't have any funds to move it and relocating it to that location would be much more expensive than what it is to move it a quarter mile away.
Can't Councilmember Moulton?
I'd be interested in seeing the plan for Coast Guard Park if it's an option.
See, I need to share screen, don't I?
Can you see it? Councilmember Moulton?
Mostly. Can you talk me through it?
Sure. So if, if you look at the concept plan here, Fairfield Street is on the north, Broadway is on the, or on, is up. Broadway is at the bottom of the screen and Del Norte Street, which goes uphill is on the right hand side. The existing billboard is kind of here in the middle of the park. And the idea is that the dolos would be situated in front of and just to the side of that. This is the overhead view. I'll go into a couple of the other. Here are some renderings that show what it could look like with the addition of other future elements, including additional flagpoles, a cut metal piece of artwork under the billboard. And those are elements that could be phased in either with or without the dolos. The one thing that would probably happen with the relocation of the dolos is the extension of these half ton boulders further north along Broadway. We've got some of them down here near the lift station on the south end, and we would probably extend those up toward the north. So that's the, again, another option with a slightly different version of an extended billboard, billboard instead of a cut metal structure or a piece of artwork beneath it.
So if I, if I understand, there are people that are big Dolo fans, right? Like this is a thing people really care about. Is there, is there a possibility that, you know, maybe it's super soon, Coast Guard days is next month. But if we can have a month long raffle with some prize and all the money can go to save the Dolo or I, I don't know. I'm a nonprofit person, so I don't know what the cities, we would partner with a nonprofit to do that, but.
I have an idea.
Yeah. Councilmember.
Why don't we enlist some artists to build a fiberglass one? And place it at the park. It'd be a lot cheaper. It'd be a great opportunity to do. I, I'm just throwing it out there. I think $50,000 is a ton of money to spend moving. I don't mean to be, you know, callous or anything, but a giant concrete, you know, piece, a giant piece of concrete. So I, I mean demolition seems fine. And I think you could actually build one pretty easily out of fiberglass that would look very real. And would cost, you know, an order of magnitude cheaper than moving that, that thing across the street. That's just my personal opinion.
I think Councilmember Castellano, did you have anything to say? Then we'll ask Councilmember Royal.
Sure. I'm just curious if we've reached out to the Coast Guard about the potential change and if they had thoughts about it.
So we did engage the Coast Guard in the concept development for Coast Guard Park. And that was, we had an interesting back and forth with them, a site visit, some meetings here at City Hall. We have not reached out to them about the potential of the project not happening. But I would say they were excited about the prospect of improvements to Coast Guard Park. Not necessarily to make it more park-like, but to make it look more like a welcoming feature to Eureka as a Coast Guard city. And I think that there are elements of the concept that was developed that would be in line with that desire that don't necessarily require the dolos to be relocated.
Councilmember Royal.
Have we had any communication with the Army Corps while they're doing all their stuff at the jetty right now?
We have not.
Okay. I would love to talk with them. Aren't they placing more dolosi right now?
They're placing rocks. They're placing, you know, they're
They're just doing boulder work. Okay.
And they do not have the equipment here currently to perform this operation. That's for sure.
It's a special task. Um, I, so it costs $10,000 just to demolish it and place?
That's the estimate. Yeah.
And was the 50,000 a pretty firm bid or was that a guess? Guess?
It was a firm, it was a written quote, including traffic control and the Caltrans encroachment permit and the grading and the move and all that. Yeah.
I, I'm in favor of keeping the Dolo. I'm just here to say that.
Member Moulton?
I'm also in favor of keeping the Dolo. I just want to speak to the sculpture idea. I think that might be more expensive than you think and far less durable. That's a, it's, it's going to get climbed on no matter what we stick over there. I think that having that be a welcoming gateway is it's something people have talked about for years, just improving the entrance to Eureka from the south. And that park has gone through a lot of improvements since I've been living up here and it's, it's great. And I think that having a Dolo there would be great. It is a really big expense. I, I would not be in favor of any kind of facsimile when we literally have the real thing there and it's very cool.
Councilmember Castellano.
This, this is great. I'm indifferent to the Dolo personally. You know, I, I think that, well, I mean, just thinking about the project that was just on our agenda, I feel like, oh, if we're going to invest an extra $40,000 in something, I would rather it go to something that would get a lot of public use. I think that, you know, the, the design plan put forward minus, I mean, it's not like we wouldn't still improve the park there, but you know, just minus the Dolo, I think would still be nice. And would still kind of, you know, honor the Coast Guard and our relationship to the Coast Guard city. Though, I mean, I'm in favor of a creative fundraising method, you know, for the Dolo. If, if, you know, if something presents itself, I just think that, you know, given city funds, I would rather money, you know, it's a lot of money. And I think there could be just more public serving benefits to spending the money elsewhere.
So I just want to speak to the fundraising, the timeframe that we're on to do this would probably not allow for enough time in order to raise definitely this amount of money. They'd like to demo sooner than later, and this would be in the way of that, that demo work.
Councilmember Royal.
So to reiterate my love of Dolo, dolosi, I, I have not one, but three pieces of Dolo related artwork in my home. I think they're really fascinating and interesting. And part of what's cool about them is obviously that they're used at our harbor entrance, which is one of the most treacherous on the whole west coast and that nothing else really seemed to work. And I mean, they don't even fully fortify the harbor entrance, but it's, it's kind of an engineering marvel and yada, yada. I don't think I have to explain why they're cool, but I do wonder if the Dolo could be moved not to Coast Guard Park. Say to the parking lot of the bowling alley near where it currently is or something that is, so if we're going to spend $10,000 to destroy the thing, that seems wasteful to me. Whereas I wonder if there's a less expensive alternative. I agree that Coast Guard Park could be improved and it doesn't necessarily need the dolos to do that. I will also note that the Clean California Grant, Local Grant Program. I was just talking with the coordinator about that, and there's going to be another round coming up soon and gateway features is one of the things that you can apply for. So I'm sure there's lots of other things that we could use that money for as well, but having some improvements to Coast Guard Park as a gateway feature could be part of that as, as it seems like it's kind of wrapped in with this dolos question. But yeah, I wondered what your thoughts are on a different location for it. Closer by and not across the street.
So staff has, you know, considered that possibility. There are a couple of, we have not spoken with the owners of the bowling alley to find out whether they're interested. There are a couple of issues with that. One would be that then the city loses control of what happens with this dolus in the future. Can it be, you know, could they then demolish it in the future? That was one reason why we didn't look at a relocation to private property in looking at potential sites. The, the other issue is that there are going to be a lot of the costs that still stay the same for that move. You don't have traffic control. You don't have grading necessarily, which is a pretty minimal part of what needs to happen with the concept as it's developed now. But you still have the transport of the crane, you still have the crane time. You have a lot of the other costs that are still involved. And, and even though it's literally next door, I'm sure that just because it's how the world works, it would still have to be loaded from its position onto the trailer, moved over and then unloaded with the crane. I don't think you could just pick it and swing it and drop it down.
So you're saying we can't just roll it over there?
Maybe, maybe instead of a fundraiser, we should have, we should crowdsource the move of the, you know, just get everybody out there and push on it.
A Victorian seaport barn raising.
Right.
Councilmember Castellano.
I mean, somewhat related to that, I, I sort of wonder if it would be worth kind of doing some sort of media thing of like, does someone want to care, you know, want to move the Dolo? And you have two weeks to come forward. And if not, then that's it.
As I mentioned, I think to an earlier question or comment, I think that we would, if council did say, go ahead and demolish it, if that's what's necessary. Staff could look for other options during the intervening time up until the last minute. Is there someone who wants to help defray the cost? Is there someone who just wants to take it off our hands? I think we could look at all those options, but we are running out of time.
I'm just curious, what does the demolition look like? Just a jackhammer?
A, a really big one on an excavator. Yeah.
Interesting. Sounds loud, but also kind of fun to watch. Councilmember Royal.
I, I'm intrigued that the 1091 could somehow be hauled out of the bay on logs. It was the 1091, right? That crusty old delightful ship. And yet the Dolo can't be moved in any way besides this way.
That was what I asked my first question.
Well, I think the biggest component of that was Leroy Zerlang and his dedication to that and his very, very generous thought. Now, if Leroy was more of a land-based operator, that, that may be an opportunity, but Leroy was a huge component of making that happen and he had the equipment here locally.
Okay. I, I know it's a different object. How long do we have to save the Eureka dolos?
I'm getting calls at this point multiple times per week from the property owner, wondering when we're going to move the thing. So it's, we don't have a firm timeline for when they want to commence demolition, but they, they want to get going.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to ask around a little bit and see if there's any interest from Coast Guard folks if we think that would be valuable. And I, I mean, they're not going to give us money to move it. Let's just say that right now, but if there's interest in finding another way to preserve it. Or, you know, it seems like maybe we could explore people that might want to take it a little bit more. It, it saddens me to destroy that thing because it's, it's a marvel. Nobody, me, me and Katie are, are really into that thing.
Mayor, we have not taken public comment on this item yet. Oh, sorry. Is there anybody here for public item, comment on this item? Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment on this item?
Somebody with 50 grand that just really wants to move it.
That would be great, wouldn't it? That'd just answer all of our questions and then I'd be like, I'm sorry, we got so excited about the questions that we got into this and so I'll bring it back for comments or a recommendation, which we're, I think we're kind of crying our way into some kind of recommendation possibly. Councilmember Castellano.
I mean, I, I, it doesn't seem like you need a formal motion, but I would say that it would be worth putting out a public call to the query, you know, of, of will you save the Dolo? But if, you know, if no one rises to the challenge, then I think that I would go forward with demolition. That would be my recommendation. I do like dolos, you know, don't get me wrong. I like dolos, but.
I, I do think that because of the council action in 2018 that directed staff then, we do need a motion and a second and a, and a vote to memorialize whatever council's direction is tonight.
Councilmember Moulton.
I would, I, I'm wondering if, how hard it would be to get some real data about possibly moving it over to the, the private property and not giving it up, but just asking them if we can stick it there for a minute while we see if we can figure out how to save it. Does that make sense? Like we don't have to give it to Harbor Lane, but we could ask them if we can, you know, decorate their parking lot for long enough to raise the money to move it and then see how much that would actually cost. I, I appreciate your perspective on how the real world works. But maybe you'd be pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I think staff's, the question would be what level of expense then would be acceptable in the council's mind to do that interim move? Like my ballpark guess, and this comes from nowhere, is that if the overall move is 50 grand, maybe moving it next door is 30. It's, it's not going to be insignificant. So what would council's direction be in that case? I think is the question that needs to be answered.
And then it would still be 50 to move it down the street on top of that ultimately.
Correct.
Might quite have another question about, so they're in a hurry to move it because they're going to demolish right away and start being able to construct their, their building.
That's correct.
So if we demolish it, want to see something built like immediately afterwards.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's part of the, part of what we don't have control over. But it's, you know, it, it's not the city's property anymore and we've been asked to remove that because we agreed to, and so we need to figure out how to make it happen.
Councilmember Royal.
So since the direction in 2018 was about Coast Guard Park more broadly, it was not?
The direction in 2018 was to, was about the surplus of the chamber property and what happens with these two elements of the site. The, the blue star plaque and the dolos. And the direction was that they should remain on site unless a move can be negotiated.
And what's the proposal for the blue star plaque?
That's a lot easier to move.
I know, but is it part of the
It could be integrated into Coast Guard Park regardless of.
Okay.
Yeah, regardless.
I just didn't see it as part of this plan. Okay. Well, I'll, I'm not going to make, I'm not going to make this motion.
I think Councilmember Castellano made a motion essentially to with utmost haste, look for an alternative, but if it can't be done to demolish the structure. And I would second that motion. If that's
I did make that. I'll make that motion. And I'm curious from a staff perspective, if you would like a timeline to go along with that motion, like within three weeks or something like that.
Quite honestly, the difficult part right now is, is just coordinating staffing. There are a lot of people gone this time of year, but I would say that three weeks might be a reasonable timeframe. We need to have some commitment or some idea of, of how to move the thing within three weeks. And if that doesn't happen, then we direct our contractor to instead demolish it.
Okay. That will be my motion.
I'll second.
Alrighty. Do we have any other? Alrighty. Do we have any other discussion? Councilmember Royo.
I, I will support this for the good of the community, but I will also try to find some options in the next couple of weeks and see if there's any other takers or creative thinkers about how to move it. So this may not be the end.
All right. Any other discussion on this before we vote? Councilmember Moulton.
I think we find a way to pay for so many things. Uh, and this, I know 50,000 seems like a large expense, but it's something that is irreplaceable. There is no way that we will ever get another dolo. And it is so iconic to, um, to the shoreline, to coastal preservation, to our bay entrance, that I think it would be a real shame to lose it. And, um, yeah, it is irreplaceable. There's no way we could ever possibly get another one. So I would, um, oppose demolishing it.
All right. Well, everybody's had their say and we have a motion in a second. So let's go ahead and vote.
I'll vote nay.
Councilmember Gail absent. Motion carries.
All right. Well, that was a, that was a hard one for the heart. People are going to be getting phone calls, so.
We get a little dolo sent to City Hall, little dolo part.
And next we are, oh, future agenda items, item J. Does anybody have any future agenda items we need to bring up? Councilmember Bauer.
I actually ran to a, someone that was, had a petition. And they were having, it, it was a fairly controversial one in our community and they were having trouble getting, you know, private property owners, you know, I won't say who, but to allow them to petition in front of their stores. But one of the issues that they brought up was petitioning at the farmer's market. So maybe it's more of a question that I don't know about free speech in our community. Where is it allowed? You know, can somebody petition on the plaza? Can they petition on the street during farmer's market? Maybe I don't need that to be a free, be an item, but maybe it's a question I have because I'm all in favor. I don't care what petition you have. I might not support it, but their ability to seek signatures, it seemed kind of limited in this particular instance. I don't know if it was just a misunderstanding from him or.
So it's not really an item that we can talk about right now.
Yes.
However, um, I can say that you can follow up with staff afterwards because you're not the first person to talk to them.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other future agenda items? All right. Then we'll move on to the city manager's report and I will let city manager Slattery introduce his presenter.
Thank you, Mayor Seaman, and good evening, mayor and council. The listed item on here is an update on SB 1383, which is the organics legislation from the state. But I do want to make a quick mention of, um, this year's street art festival is going to be August 1st through August 6th. And it'll be held out at, down at Halverson Park. There'll be the typical fanfare there and the typical events and spaces there, but there'll be painting murals on the support structures for the 255 bridge. So should be a really good time, August 1st through August 6th, um, down at Halverson Park. It'll be all on city property and so everybody come out and see that. So with no further ado, we have project manager Prasker here to give a quick update on SB 1383 and some of the, um, actions that have been taken lately and what the next steps are.
In, thank you. Eureka Trash Bash will be happening in the morning of the street art festival down at Adorning Halverson Park. So come join us at 9:00 AM to 10:30 and help us beautify the waterfront before the street art festival. Okay. Back to our regularly scheduled programming. All right. Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Robin Prasker, here with the Community Services Department tonight. And we're going to do a quick update on SB 1383. For a quick reminder, this is a state mandate aiming to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from methane in the landfill related to, uh, organic waste in landfill and then edible food from businesses that, um, is being thrown away. So a quick reminder of what the entire mandate encompasses. Uh, we are to provide organics collection for everybody in the city, including residences and businesses. Uh, we need to work with certain businesses that are eligible for edible food recovery programs. Uh, we need to conduct education and outreach. We will have to procure a certain tonnage per year of recyclable, items that are from recovered organic products and then procure recycled paper products. We need to assess our capacity to rescue all the edible food and ensure that their local food rescue networks can, um, increase their capacity to accept that food. And then we'll have a lot of compliance and enforcement. So organic waste collection is the most, um, popular and, um, exciting piece of this all. So kind of backtracking to what we've done so far and what's coming. First and foremost, we have a regional partnership with every city in the county and the county itself. Uh, we've been working together for almost two years on this topic and there's still a lot more to do together. Uh, but this started with the recognition that we needed technical assistance. So we jointly, uh, put out an RFP through Humboldt Waste Management Authority to solicit a consultant. That was awarded to Edgar and Associates. Since then, they have put together a compliance roadmap, which lays the pathway for our plan to comply. HWMA very recently voted to host organics pre-processing at the Eureka Recycling Center. And what is next from there to implement organics collection is the retrofitting and opening of that pre-processing facility. From there, limited routes will begin for curbside collection. And then after that, we'll be able to go full citywide service. Um, there are major supply chain issues with trucks, so we are attempting to navigate that. It is a very fluid situation. So I do want to get into what pre-processing is and differentiate from processing because that is important. So with pre-processing occurring at HWMA, what that means is it's a location for the collection trucks to offload the materials and prepare it for transport to the facility that will do the actual composting. Pre-processing can also screen out contamination and create a higher quality material. Um, there's also abilities to use machinery to create what's called a slurry. Um, this can make the, uh, material even a higher quality and have more outlets to process it, including what I understand could be used as a fish food. Um, it's also important to note that West Green has a land, uh, landscape, has a contract, uh, to receive our green waste until 2027. So pre-processing locally will include separating the organic waste from the green waste. So step one is collecting the curbside organics. Step two is dropping it off at the pre-processing facility. And then step three would be loading it for transport to a permanent facility. So processing is the actual composting of the material. Um, and there's currently no facility within the county that offers this service. Very likely why we don't have any service and never had until now. So short term means that once we pre-process the material, it'll go out of the area to a certified compost facility that is yet to be determined at this time. And long term, we recognize that we need processing capabilities in county. It just makes sense, is more sustainable and will keep a closed loop within our county. We do understand it could take up to five years to get to that place. So that's why you're going to see a short term and a long term plan related to organics collection. So moving on to business requirements, that's something we've been really working on the past few months is getting that information out there to the community. So for businesses that need to recover, recover edible food, um, that's differentiated by the tier one and tier two businesses. And they have different start dates. Um, but what it means is they'll have to contract with a food recovery organization. They'll need to donate all access edible food and they will need to maintain records. We just completed a draft food rescue capacity report. And what we found is that there's 25 tier one businesses, 12 of which have some sort of donation program already in place. There's 54 tier two businesses of which 14 currently are donating some food. Uh, we also know that local food rescue organizations will require financial and logistical support to expand their services to businesses who are not currently donating food. We did put on a workshop for these businesses in May. Um, we sent letters to all of them and followed up with phone calls. Unfortunately, it was sparsely attended, um, but we did record it and have that available for viewing at people's convenience. Um, that is linked on our resource site for people to watch. So talking about general business requirements, uh, subscribing to organic service when available, providing organics and recycling bins in all disposal areas, providing annual education to employees about proper sorting techniques and inspecting bins to monitor for contamination. Uh, contamination is going to be a really big one with SB 1383. Um, as you know, from the earlier presentation of the PSA, that recycling contamination is an issue currently outside of even having an organics program in place. And the state is really going to press us to be more involved, be more proactive. And there'll be specific reporting requirements related to our activities and monitoring for contamination. Um, so we're going to make some big changes in how we do that. Multi-family dwellings with four or more units, uh, will also need to ensure that there's organic service when available. Uh, supply adequate space and access to the receptacles, provide education to new tenants and monitor for contamination and educate. Uh, we did also provide a presentation to the Eureka Chamber of Commerce last month to their Subcommittee on Government Affairs. Um, and that was very successful and that video is available for view. And then we just hot off the press, completed a business info guide. We have some here tonight that you're welcome to take with you. And then we'll be doing a bulk print job to get these out in the community. Um, we'll work with the chamber to distribute them and other avenues. Um, so we look forward to circulating that in the next few weeks. So what's next? There's a lot. Uh, there'll be a big ordinance update coming in the next few months. These will codify the state requirements and provide enforceable mechanisms. We will be negotiating our franchise and rates with our hauler to be able to offer the new programs and requirements of the mandate. We'll need to identify how we'll meet our procurement targets. Uh, will we procure compost, mulch, bioenergy? That's to be determined. Um, and then the education and outreach program. Uh, we're just starting to get our feet wet with that, with the presentations we've done and the info guide we just finalized, but there's still a lot more materials to develop. And there's a desire to do that regionally too, so that each city isn't making their own pamphlets and we could all make one and use them together. Related topic that I wanted to highlight on is with the pre-processing of organics at HWMA, there is going to be a closure and want to make it really clear what that does and doesn't mean. Um, so the Eureka Recycling Center is the left side of HWMA and the right side is the transfer station. That's where garbage goes. The recycling center will close on August 1st. That mainly affects the ability to recycle appliances, scrap metal, TVs and e-waste. Though fortunately, those have other places to go within the county. Um, while household recycling was accepted on the Eureka Recycling Center side, it is also accepted on the trash side. So folks can still go and bring their mixed recycling into HWMA for recycling. Uh, this also does not affect their carpet program, their tire program, or their household hazardous waste program. Um, so the Eureka Recycling Center will be looking for a new location. Um, and some of the background on why that occurred is HWMA has a solid waste permit. And being able to amend that is a much quicker process than starting over. Uh, and with the state mandate breathing down our neck and giving us a tight timeline, we just did not have the time to start a permit from scratch. So that was the best decision that we were all able to make. Leslie, being our HWMA board member, has done a great job being a leader in all of this and very much appreciate her. So I think that's all I've got here, but I am available for questions.
Thank you so much. You are doing just all kinds of great work in the waste department. Thorough, thorough stuff. Any questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's, it's needed. This has been a long time coming, right? But I guess, you know, one of the things we're going to be asked about is is going to increase our rates. If you're already green waste recycling, does this, does this add on to your costs? And then probably on a similar line of questioning, if you're already composting, will you be required, you know, as part of this process to pay a fee, you know? I understand we all have to kind of pay into this to make it work, but these are the questions that we're going to be faced with.
Yes. Uh, rate wise, there of course will be an associated rate with the new service. What that will look like, it's so hard to say right now. It's kind of like the chicken or the egg situation. You got to get the infrastructure, but then how do you know what the rates are going to be for the infrastructure? It's quite a big process. Um, related to those who are composting at home, that is going to be a big topic to work through together. Um, there's a lot of different angles to look at it through. One being, um, meat and dairy and bones can be difficult to compost at home. Um, so if folks are composting at home, they still might require a service for those items. So we'll have to get into specific material types. Um, another piece of that is, um, we'll have to regulate folks who compost at home per the state's mandate. So we'll have to, um, check in with folks, have a program. Uh, best practices are saying that we'll have to ensure that they're trained properly. So we might have to offer workshops and certify people to compost their home. It'll be a big thing. I know, I know. But, um, when we're talking public health and vermin and all the things that could go sideways with encouraging this activity at home, we got to find the right way that rewards people for doing the right thing and keeping things on their property versus setting us up for systemic failures in a public health crisis. So, um, those are all things that we're going to work through together.
And you brought up vermin. I think about in the fall, if you live on the green, on the gulches, the bear comes through every fall and he's going to have a field day.
I was going to ask that. Somebody just brought that up to me today, the bears.
I just something I want to be thinking about and dealing with, but part of the process, I guess.
Maybe special bear lives on the.
Just a couple of comments on it. So the rates, we, we have a bundled rate. This will be going into a bundled rate, just like currently now when you pay for garbage, you, it's, your recycling's bundled into it. And so when we did mandatory recycling and, and, and garbage previously, of course there's an effect on the rate. You got to pay for totes. You got to pay for things. There's some, um, cost efficiencies in this program because we already have a green waste program in place. It's my understanding that we'll be putting, um, using those green waste totes as a collection vehicle for this. So there will be some cost efficiencies there, but there will be need for new routes and new trucks because our green waste, people that apply for green waste are not at the volume that this is going to take. So you're going to have to have some more routes and some new trucks. So there'll definitely be more costs. I don't think it'll be as expensive as it was when we went to mandatory recycling because that was a whole new program with new bins and, um, for every, uh, 8,000 customers that we had. And then, um, as far as, and I'm not as familiar, but with the recycling program that we had, we do have a recycler's exclusion. I think that the oversight of the program that would allow for exclusions would have to be a little bit more staff intensive. But I would think that if somebody can demonstrate that they are not impacting the landfill and they are diverting their waste appropriately, that there would be at least a residential, um, exclusion program. It would be a little bit more intense than what we do for the recycling program currently. But, um, we don't want to be punitive. I was under the impression when we did the mandatory that there would be a lot more of those exclusions being applied for and the, the percentage rate is very low. So now that it's been out there, I think that implementing this program, since we already have mandatory, it's already bundled. I think there'll be some concerns about rates increasing, but the, the backlash compared to when we went to mandatory, people are already in the system right now. It's just a new program added to that system.
Councilmember Moulton.
How do, um, existing composting services fit into this? I know there's a couple of guys with, uh, bikes and buckets that go around and will collect your compost for you. Is that, would that still be an option or is that something we could have folks, um, certify that they use that service instead of paying the city to do it?
I could speak to.
Well, I think it'll be very similar. What happens is a term called flow control. And I think that in order to have a successful program, you have to secure flow control. So I believe some of the ordinances that council will be looking at is the ability to, to have flow control. And so, um, similar to our franchise agreement now, which we've had issues in the past of private entities coming in and going against our franchise agreement, this organic waste will be folded into that franchise. this organic waste will be folded into that franchise agreement and uh, that will not be allowed.
Um, and and just to say, uh Edgar and Associates is currently working with two of those local providers right now to to write a grant to potentially expand their services. Um, we don't know what that exact, how that might be integrated into the, you know, the relationship with HWMA and Recology as they expand, but it's there's certainly support in the community for those services and making sure that they have the infrastructure to to work collaboratively to meet those needs.
I'll also just add in that I believe a lot of the franchise stuff is related to the hauling of the material, not the processing. Um, so there's a very good chance that our community composters will find a niche in the processing end of things, more so than the hauling. But this is all, again, very fluid, um, and there's a lot of players.
And I think that's really important because you get into the argument of this, you know, daily truck traffic and getting the stuff to other areas and its, you know, effect on greenhouse gas emissions and those type of things. And so anything that we could do, rather than having to ship it to somebody, I mean, right now we ship our garbage all the way up to Dry Creek in Oregon. And so hopefully there's, and I'm not aware of a compost facility that could handle the volume like this closer than Yucaya. So if there's any way that those smaller processors could get into agreements with HWMA and offset some of that volume that needs to go elsewhere, it's it's going to be beneficial for everybody involved, so.
Councilmember Royal.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I think it's important to note that transportation is a big part of this picture and the gold standard should be that people are doing their own composting at home, that less stuff leaves, that people are dealing with stuff in their house, that that should be what the goal, that should be where we are trying to get to. Is just just doesn't end up in the in a truck or in a landfill or in a bin or anything. Uh, that decentralized thing is going to eliminate the the footprint of the transportation at every step.
Councilmember Royal.
Thank you. And and on that note, I I'm also excited about the food waste diversion portion of thirteen eighty-three. I know we've talked about that a bit before at past meetings, but um, you know, I I guess it seemed like the focus from what I've seen about SB thirteen eighty-three and food waste diversion is more focused on like large volumes, like uh restaurant businesses or um groceries and I I would love to have a little more focus on the education and outreach for people about how to I don't I don't know really what that that effective message is, how to have less food waste in your home, because I think that that, you know, in keeping with that comment about the trucking and the transportation, so we don't want to be hauling stuff around that, you know, ideally this is supposed to improve the closed loop. And we have so much food food production here, um, but making sure that people are being conscientious about food consumption and, you know, making sure they're eating it all. I I don't know, I I'm, I think we're very fortunate, uh, many of us in this country to not have to deal with food insecurity, so people just waste a lot of food. So I was wondering if you have any thoughts about the outreach for that or what that will look like for home, um, for residents, not for businesses?
Yeah, um, you're correct that the mandate is related to the tier one and tier two businesses. So there's no mandate related to preventing um, food waste in the home. Um, though I think a lot of the efforts we're going to put into the program are easily transferable to residences. Um, also, we actually partnered with the City of Arcata Food For People and HSU at the time um, on a cower cycle grant specifically about food rescue. Um, there was a lot of ads and outreach done about what are expiration dates, what are best buy dates, how to properly store food. So we have already laid some groundwork um, in that area. And that's something that we could easily keep going and expand on um, among these business efforts.
Councilmember Castellano.
Um, firstly, project manager Prasker, you're you're killing it. Um, I just want to say, uh, um, I really appreciate all the educational materials that you're creating and um, I I feel like it would be great if you're willing to share some of these with HWMA. Um, I think they could provide good guideposts for other communities who who need to do some education around this as well. Um, and then, and yeah, and just thank you for being a leader in this conversation in the whole county. It's people, I hear from a lot of people how much they appreciate the work you're doing. So thank you for that. Um, seriously. Um, and then, you know, to for the for the rest of council, um, you know, this is definitely this is this is a big deal for the community, you know, it's a major infrastructure change. You know, I mean, in speaking from the perspective of HWMA, probably the biggest change that that organization has undergone since the closure of the landfill. Um, so and there's just a lot of moving parts, as well as a lot of innovation and change within the industry um, and opportunities. So it might be that, you know, over the next few years, as we're implementing things, new opportunities might become available. For instance, um, just a week ago, I I attended a meeting. Um, there's some some dairy folk and anyway, there's some dairy folk near uh Ferndale that are working with a a organization that's or a business that that's um, taking um, manure and food waste and actually composting that onsite and creating renewable energy. Um, and and this is like a real project that potentially could be implemented within the next couple of years. I mean, they have some maybe hurdles with um, the our local enforcement agency and, you know, just getting permitting. But um, for instance, if that project goes forward, um, you know, and similar projects are happening other places in the country, they could actually take a lot of the the food waste slurry that's prepared at, if, you know, if it if it's prepared at HWMA and turn that into composted energy. So, you know, there's, I mean, that's not in development yet, but it's like on the threshold. And, you know, there's people who are really working to innovate this industry partially because of requirements such as SB thirteen eighty-three, so. Um, yeah, and just thanks, Robin.
Any other uh comments or questions? Other than just uh sharing Councilmember Castellano's appreciation for all the good work you're doing. All right. Well, with that, we will um, close out the city manager reports. You're all done. City Manager Slattery?
I am. I'll just echo. Robin is a rock star.
Thank you. And we will go ahead and uh do our council report or council member reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Molton.
I'm going to pass right now. I don't have anything to report except that I'm about to go to summer camp and I'm excited about that. Um, assuming I get over this cold winter time.
I hope you do and have a great time and I hope that those girls that attend have a life-changing experience. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I'll apologize for meeting the last, for missing the last meeting. I'm sorry. Um, I was in Boston and it was a really great adventure to do the Freedom Walk and see the site. It's where you see the Boston Massacre site. You go to Bunker Hill and it's a three or four mile walk and you stop at all the historic places in Boston. Coolest thing ever. I highly recommend you do it to see, you know, three hundred year old buildings and uh the graves of, you know, all the founding fathers. Really cool, great family adventure. And then I've been going to Friday Night Market, which has been outstanding turnout and you know, uh, people are enjoying walking down the street and um, and it seems like it's been a great event. So been really excited to to partake in that. And then Old Town Farmers Market too, which has been interesting because it's like, it's small right now and I'm like, what's going on? It was a cold spring and nothing, nothing's growing, you know, as fast and so tomatoes are rare um, right now. So it's, but it's been great to go back and and have that um, happening and so yeah, just a lot of enjoying the summer in Eureka and 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 our town. And that's it. Thanks.
Right on. Councilmember Royal.
Well, um, the exciting news that has already been made public, but I'll reiterate, is that the um, TERSIP grant um, that included the Transit Center in um, Old Town as well as uh significant investments in hydrogen buses and hydrogen infrastructure for Humboldt County um, to comply with the um, zero waste mandate from the state um, was successful. So almost forty million dollars coming to Humboldt Transit Authority and to Humboldt County to make those improvements. And that'll um, provide hydrogen fueling infrastructure for um, for multiple fleets, not just for Humboldt Transit Authority over time, so um, commercial hydrogen fueling as well. Um, and um, just to touch on the why, I mean, so we have huge distances for buses to traverse and we are seeking to make um, a connection to Mendocino, so there's a gap between Soham and Willetts essentially right now, so people can't um, consistently take transit um, or a bus from here to the San Francisco Bay Area, and that's the gap. Um, and there, the two transit agencies have tried to kind of fill the gap in the past um, and and struggled to do that. So this also includes some funds to explore that and to solve that problem. Um, and our general manager is working really hard to collaborate with regional agencies to do that. Um, but battery electric buses just don't run um, far enough here uh for us, you know, to serve the routes that we serve in our large rural area. So hydrogen was really the only alternative um, left to explore um, for for buses. So I'm really excited for that and it's going to pave the way for some um, really cool things in in our city. Um, so I I, my hat is off to Humboldt Transit Authority staff and Schatz Energy staff and um, other consultants who worked on the project. But um, Schatz was, I mean, apparently it's really a um, groundbreaking project for the state and it's sort of their um, their flag flagship project for this new program and um, it's it's really exciting stuff. So um, that is the big news. Um, I think I'm going to kind of skip all the other things, um, all kinds of little meetings here and there and um, save it for next time. I'm sure I'll have bigger updates next time.
All right. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, um, uh, let's see. I spoke to some things already in the course of the meeting. Um, oh, I was um, nominated, accepted, invited to to be part of the California Stewardship leadership training for this upcoming year, so I'll be doing that, um, which I'm excited about. Uh, I'll report more once I know more about what it is. And then um, I'll just speak to some upcoming things. Um, which is, there's a Disability Pride Festival at Synapsis um, on July twenty-third, the Saturday from two to five PM. It's free. Um, and I'm helping to coordinate um, a Parade of Dreams in Old Town on August thirteenth uh, at two PM. And there's a project manager, Prasker, and I are collaborating to organize a Wabash cleanup on July thirtieth. And um, I'll be meeting uh with Assemblymember Wood this Thursday and um, giving him a tour of various kind of arts and cultural um, kind of sites and endeavors kind of in Eureka and Arcata. So that's going to be happening this Thursday. Um, so excited for that.
And Councilmember Arroyo forgot something, but I am also a California Stewardship Leader, so we can talk about it.
I forgot this because it wasn't an event, but then I revisited my notes. Um, I just wanted to make an an statement, a brief statement about the flyers um, that were anti-Semitic in nature that have been distributed throughout Humboldt County and say um, in solidarity with um, council members from various other jurisdictions that um, that is roundly something we do not condone or support. Um, of course, um, we respect the free speech rights of individuals, but um, distributing hateful speech in people's homes and driveways and businesses is unacceptable. Um, and so there are um, places where that kind of, uh, well, there are places where your free speech rights will never be constrained um, as much as it's frustrating and challenging um, to to hear some of those things. But um, that kind of behavior of distributing those um, in a in a threatening manner is um, is not acceptable. And I think we probably all agree on that. Um, and it's not consistent with our value statements. So we as a city have um, moved forward with equity work um, and racial and social justice efforts um, internally and externally. And we have um, value statements that we've crafted as part of our strategic visioning and beyond and that kind of thing. Um, needs to be said that that's not consistent with our values. And um, even some of the public comment that we hear and aren't able to respond to is at times very much not consistent with our values, um, especially when it targets a specific group. So I just wanted to say that, um, because I think I I really appreciate EPD and other law enforcement response to it quickly um, and effectively to the extent possible. Um, but I think as leaders, we need to say that that's not okay.
Thank you very much. And with that, I believe everybody's had a chance to talk and we will adjourn. We're not going to have a meeting on August second, right? So we'll be back uh for the third week in August. See y'all then. Bye-bye.